As someone who might do that program right now, works in the area, and I have UVM interns in my job each summer. And I know that students from the university are obviously looking for volunteer opportunities.
Great.
Yeah, that would go something to how much.
I suspect you would have quite a few.
That would be great. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Gwen Krasowski's here too. Oh, okay. I think anybody who recommends her. So Gwen, come on over. You've had, as I understand, some experience in developing conservation trust programs? And you worked with the Vermont Urban and Community Forest Project?
Yes, the Vermont Urban and Community Forest Program. It's a statewide program working to across Vermont to engage citizens on the importance and value of trees. And we empower citizens through education, we have funded grants, and we're helping communities preparing how to manage the trees better. But yeah, I have worked for a variety of different conservation organizations in the past, and worked on conservation things, and familiar with the process of acquisition and all the legal issues with that, and have everything created based on documentation.
Great. Maybe some ideas about grant funding for some of the South Burlington projects? Not that you would write it, but I need at least into the grant or entity partner?
You can write it.
Yeah, you could write it too. But that sounds like that would be a good idea. Any other questions from other members? Okay. The process and just so you know, we have some additional interviews next Monday, and then we'll meet and make our decisions and fill the slot. I think for natural resources, I think we have a few extra candidates, so not everyone can be appointed, but we potentially might come back with something else to offer people, but we'll then let you know the following day.
Great. We met three of you off the chair.
Okay, that's good. Great. All these young women, yeah. Come on down. Yeah.
Kristen.
Kristen, your last name?
Gillian.
And you are interested in graduate degrees?
Oh.
Okay. So you work with the UVM extension?
I do, yeah.
Correct.
So I work more in an agricultural setting, but I have an undergraduate degree in environmental science, which focuses on conservation values, and a master's in ecology, so I can have a little bit of both.
Okay. That shows what's at my feet. Also, importantly, kind of my guess, get to the W's on your list.
I'm usually the last.
Are you?
Almost. Definitely the last.
Equal interest in the three, or really looking for that?
Probably the first two.
Parks and Rec and Parks and Rec.
I also am an advocate, you know, as work in an agricultural sector. So, Parks and Rec outside.
Okay. All right.
Do you three know each other?
No, we don't know.
We just know. It's not like you're all the same undergraduates. They're roommates, actually.
Maybe we need to get together.
Okay. So there's actually two then that you would really might be interested in, natural resources and recreation parks. Okay. Well, that's great, because that helps us feel.
Sure, it sounds like there's lots of people interested in natural resources.
Well, we have some openings, and so try to accommodate, and thank you for expressing your interest. We haven't had this many applicants in a long time, so it's thrilling.
What farm did you grow up on?
I grew up on Marsh Metal Farm, which is in Fairleigh, Vermont. It's on the Connecticut River, so on the other side of the state.
Is it a dairy farm, or is it?
No, my father sold the cows when I was younger, so it was some crops, so corn and hay, sold to other farms. And yeah, so I have just a passion for Vermont landscape and agriculture in general, and my work right now involves a lot of places, conservation related to the lake producing soil erosion and fox perishment. So I have that particular interest.
And we've had a cultural sustainability committee, excuse me, that was active in this community as well, so it is an interest held by Brittany, who is a core who are really interested in, has worked on that, so. I'm sure they're looking for new places. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So is there anyone else? John Owen, did we talk to John Owen?
No.
Did you say Jeremy King?
He was there.
Sure. Did you say Jeremy? We, Jeremy King, is he here also? No, yes, okay. Well, well.
Mr. Fisher?
Owen, Owen, okay. Owen, you're interested in natural resources, you recently moved here from Charlotte, in fact.
Parks and Rec.
Oh, Parks and Rec, excuse me, you're on both though. So Parks and Rec is first, and then natural resources is also.
What page is it on? There it is again. 75.
Okay. So you have some experience, and you're interested in either one, but more or less you're a Parks program. Tell me why you're more interested in one.
I'm just very impressed. I have a new picture of Charlotte, which is mostly rural, for the city, they have a lot of developed, it gives you a lot of parks. Wheeler Park, over those parks, and I like to bike, just bike, park down the waterfront and down the high street. I'm just very impressed with what you've done. Well, I'm also involved at South Village, which is a suburbanous land community, I'm on their committee for storage committee, which is responsible for the 145 acres in Lafferty, which will employ the farm, wetlands, blue lands, where they built the trails. So I've just gotten interested in this last thing.
Is there anything we didn't ask, is that a question that you might want to fill out?
Well, I'm just curious, what's the relationship between this committee and Parks and Rec? How does that work? I mean, is there a new idea, or a new project coming up? Do we bounce off hand first?
For, it's Maggie, you were, and Lucrez, and she staffed the committee. So she's often there. Is she there every time?
Yep.
Yeah, so she's there, so she works intimately with the committee.
She is.
And so I think they build on each other with good ideas.
And then when, as an idea would like to move forward, I assume it comes to you as five?
Well, it depends what it is. I mean, Maggie, as the director, has a budget and some ability to do different things. So it depends, if it says paving a new, or creating a new bike path, it probably will come before us.
Right.
But lots of other things, I think she carries out. We're all the same.
She informs.
But not everything needs an official approval by the council. Any other questions?
Are you able to walk from South Village all the way to the Wheeler property by paths at this point in time?
South Village? No, there's a little bit of Spear Street.
Spear?
You'd have to walk up.
You have to walk, you can't go around the back and?
Well, they don't have to complete the trail.
They don't?
There's some question about whether there are going to be trails that go all the way through.
What's the little development that's just north of South Village?
South Point.
South Point, right.
There's trails back there.
Yeah, and then they?
Then there's your brother.
And they connect to the?
They connect to Wheeler. I mean, to Underwood, I meant Underwood, I'm sorry. I meant Underwood.
Yeah.
Right. So I'm just curious if there will be, the building that walks from Underwood south around South Point, through South Village, all the way into the Orson Farms, that will be able to happen someday.
Well, thank you very much, Andrew, for your interest and appointment. All right, who else has a good one? I've got Kane Smart, she's here. Karen McKenney, did she arrive yet? Jeremy King.
Grant Taylor.
Grant Taylor. Well, personally, as we did see.
Barbara Devine.
You have Barbara Devine on every board? Well, talk about the spotlight. Okay, we'll give them, because I think they were scheduled potentially a little bit later. Oh, yes.
When I emailed Celine, and I'll be two of you in today, she told me to be here at eight o'clock, so it could be that some of the times just got.
Right, I think that's the case. So that's why we'll fill in and wait until a little bit after eight, I think. Harvey, yes?
Yeah, I probably should reapply. I got two emails saying to come tonight.
Uh huh.
And Lee Ridley.
Oh.
And one phone call, and I came in the office and submitted a resume to the secretary.
Well, I don't think you need to reapply. I think you may very well be on the agenda for next week.
You, that's nice, I won't mind coming back, but they said to come tonight.
Oh, I apologize.
I could have brought that with me, because it was a date that we're well written on.
Oh, it's not that I don't believe that you've submitted it, you're on the list, so we have it, we just had to make it, it wasn't made available to us in this week's packet, so.
I'm sure Celine, did you talk to Celine when you were in?
Yes.
And did she say to come next week?
She gave me an email with today's date on it.
Okay. Well, if you came in today, it would have been too late for the packet, as Helen says, so next Monday, there are scheduled more interviews for next Monday, and your materials will be in the packet when that goes out on Thrive.
Yeah, okay, I'll come up next week, I don't came up because I was told to.
So you did get your application in on time, though?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not that, and it's just.
What committee?
Yeah.
Committee you're in.
My name? Lee Ridley.
What committees?
The one from last week, he was on that list.
Bicentennial?
Yeah.
Which committees are you in?
So the bike path to Deskeen?
Yes. Well, I apologize, but we will be happy to talk with you next Monday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So shall we have a conversation about the spotlight then? You know, we haven't heard, we're sort of reminded to be thinking about that, but.
I wasn't in town, so I wasn't there. An overview of what this place is, looks like.
Well, I will start, or do you want, Kevin, you've had more conversations with them.
Yeah, we had, we were approached, Helen was approached initially, some, two, three months ago, from Tim Barton and Jennifer Barton, who operate a spotlight over on San Remo Drive. It's a performing arts, small private performing arts center, and they were interested in talking with the council about how a larger facility would fit into city center, and whether or not it would make sense. They believe there's a market niche that is not being met in the greater Chittenden County region, for black box theater of an appropriate size in their, in their, and also a normal theater of around four to 500 seats. Proceedium. Proceedium, that's a new word for me. Proceedium theater, four to 500 seats. And so with that in mind, we began some discussions with them about how such a facility might fit in. Staff met with them, Tom and I, and Alana, and Paul, and Maggie, and Jennifer met with them, just to kind of go over, understand what the concept was. And we felt there was enough discussion about it, and enough content there, that it was something that the council should be aware of, and then ultimately the council should decide whether or not you want to add that to the TIP financing plan. We had some time to do that, because we are going back to the Vermont Economic Progress Council, and we'll call an updated plan. But we would need to move fairly quickly on that, we would have to have some type of feasibility study around this. Now, these types of facilities have been built all over the country, so there are plenty examples of the type of things that Tim and Jennifer are talking about. Whether or not it's appropriate mix in city center is a decision that the council needs to weigh in on. Staff will have a recommendation on this, but we wanted you to be there, and have Tim and Jennifer and others testify to the council as to the value of this, and then have you discuss that, and ultimately make a decision. So we're not, this isn't a fast track type thing, but it would be good to know if you lean toward including this, and if you do, we'll start ramping up toward a modest feasibility study.
One of the things that I was struck by is, because when they first talked about it, I was thinking, okay, this is sort of their business, and they have, it sounded like really important connections with a number of people from the theater industry who had programs that they were providing around the country, that they would be interested in bringing here, and would use the spot. But I was trying to think, so is this going to be just, you know, couples like the Flynn? That isn't being used every single day. But they kind of convinced me that there are numerous dance groups and theater groups who are always looking for adequate space to both practice and perform. So it sounded like there was a much broader use, that it wouldn't put different dance studios out of business, but rather would give them an opportunity to rent space to accommodate the demand, and maybe have a better place for their recitals or performances. So it seemed like there possibly is a market out there for entrepreneurs who are providing these kinds of theatrical and dance and sorts of things, events and training, I guess, lessons and so forth, that it could very well be used, or would be used a lot in need of need. They also talked fairly extensively, I felt, about other communities who built this, who have seen this as a successful way to bring another group of people into their city center, who then not only go to a performance, or drop their children off at a dance class or theater class, but then stay and shop, or grab a cup of coffee, or do something like that. So it seemed like it might be interesting, or worth pursuing, as yet another way to bring a very different group of people into town. They were also asked, you know, point blank, is this in, you know, we challenging in competition with the Flynn, which I think is a good question. And they felt that it actually, they could work very well with the Flynn, because this size theater is so much smaller than the Flynn, I think they have 1,800 seats, or something like that, maybe more, I don't know. 1,500, excuse me. But there are lots of different kinds of programming that they can't afford to use the Flynn. And this would allow even more theater from around the country to come to this community, and not necessarily compete with the Flynn, but actually, you know, enhance that opportunity for the public. And they also felt that they could probably do some scheduling and programming in conjunction with the thing. It would be going after different people. And I did get ahold of Tim, and he offered me an opportunity to go over and meet with them, and I just hadn't had the time, though I was out of town on that day. This would be an individual privately owned venture?
No.
No?
The concept is that this would be viewed.
As a public space.
As a public space, that would be available, that would be professionally managed.
They would be the managers.
Not necessarily.
No, not necessarily, but they made it clear we needed a professional manager.
They and others from in-state and out-of-state would seek to use the facility.
Would like to use it, I see, okay.
And you might, it might be, you know, we might operate it like Karen's Arena is operated, where the city owns it, but a nonprofit manages it, runs it, something like that. At this point, we're not talking about a privately owned facility.
No.
And so, right, they showed us examples, and one of them was the combination of a performance space and library, and that is something that is in my vision as well, and that I've always wanted to see. It's something, having attended the Sunday concerts, concerts at the library, they could really benefit from this kind of space. And I think, having grown up in a, in a city where there was always a performance space connected to the library, it really enriched what the library brought to the community, which the library has a mission, right, which is bringing not only literature, and now online resources and other information to the community without a charge, it's also to bring arts and performing arts. And they also talked about the financing of these places, and they said that the, any receipts that they would, you know, have based on performances and camps, they have numerous camps here in town that you know about, that are nationally known, even internationally known, and people travel here, that that was a way to finance also, was to have the TIP and benefactors, and also to have these receipts that could go towards paying back on the loan. So it was quite exciting, and we're thinking about a teen center, we're thinking about things for our teens, and going over to, what is that, Party City in the Forum. I think that there's a real call for it, from our communication.
It was interesting, the combo, I forgot, but the combo with the library was a fascinating, I think, interconnection that would be worth pursuing. So that was, I think the three of us who were there were pretty interested in the concept and the story and further. So if there's any other discussion, we can certainly bring him here to the council for a, and he, I mean, we all think that that would be appropriate, to have a more, a presentation again for everyone, so we can ask more questions.
I mean, you know, we're talking about, there's a feasibility study going on with the arena right now. City center is progressing along as a plan, there's a desire to have a library, maybe visible offices, right, we don't know what that cloud is right now, but when somebody says to be, you know, like, city center art center, performing arts center, my ears hurt right up at that, because that gives a kind of an extra brand to something that could be quite a magnet for performing arts in South Burlington. I mean, that's a real asset, if you ask me. And that's a very complimentary asset to what else is going on in that vicinity. I mean, all things being equal, right, and not being, our vision is, you know, we're trying to build that now, and I haven't heard that, those words spoken before, ever, you know, a South Burlington or city center, performing arts center. That would be a wonderful thing to really examine very closely, for, you know, its affordability, sustainability, and for its use, because if it could complement the Flynn, and take up that slack, where, you know, artists can't afford to fill the Flynn, but they could probably fill a four to 500 seat proscenium, right, that says that that thing could be booked a lot, potential.
You know, we had looked at a piece of that in reality, when we looked at the, what the building would look like on Market Street, and if it was to have the recreation department there, and the library there, and an open performance space, and, right, Jennifer?
Yes.
And so that's not totally removed from that, and then that seemed to be almost taken off the table, and I know our library group has been actively looking for financing and funding, and so I would hope that we wouldn't go too far down the road without having their active involvement as well, because this adds a different dimension than what I think had been portrayed to the library group. Is that true, Jay?
Yeah.
Right. Not that I don't think it's valuable, I love the idea of that, but I think that we need to make sure that we keep this communication open with the group that's doing fundraising at this time, on fundraising claims.
Absolutely, yeah.
Deborah?
No, I thought that a performance space was part of what the task force was looking at, and certainly I've advocated for that before, and I just wanted to mention that the concerts that are held in the library are packed with people, they have to move, stacks of the way, people go all the way from one end of the library to the other to try to hear these, the acoustics are great, because all the books, but the space is not adequate for the interests that is already there in this community for performances. I've heard jazz, and all kinds of things there, and it is something that is already there, as a need.
Jay?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Jay?
So, I guess speaking as, speaking as, not for.
Library.
Library board. As we've looked at a new library, as Jennifer said, a tremendous need in a library is program space, for small programs, but also for larger. And there has been talk about having a performance, performance space as part of the library, that may be two to 300. I mean, now we're talking four to 500, which might be great too. Maybe it complements the library, but it's not part of the library. I don't think the library ever looked to run a performance space, to grant such a thing.
Oh, no, not to run it.
But I think we would love to be able to have that space, we're not going to put on 500, you know, we're doing our summer, our weekend things, and it would be great to be able to get 200 comfortably, to get 300. So we don't need that big space, the community absolutely needs that space, so if we, if it could complement.
Well, let me suggest that.
But we would love to chat.
Right, well, if we agree to bring him in, let's make sure we invite the library, both the fundraising group, and I guess the library committee, to hear the presentation and be part of that, so you understand and can help inform and.
And its location too, where, what it would be.
Right, but that would be great.
Yes? I work at Chamberlain School.
And you just tell us your name?
My name's Kathy Murphy.
Okay.
And we have a need for space as well, and I'm sure some of the other schools do as well, for instance, when we have our artist in residence come, it's hard to get gym space at the high school, it's really hard. This year, when our performance happens, we can go there for the performance, but we can't get in during the day for rehearsal. So I would see a public performance space as a real plus for our schools as well.
I think that was mentioned by them, and I agree with you, that was, just even other groups who would want to use the existing theater space in the high school, find that they can't get into practice, and so it really might have the right number of seats, and the lighting that they need, and the acoustics, but not really the ability to practice and stage it, really be ready for a performance. Okay, any other thoughts? Are we sort of interested in hearing more? I think we probably should, before we decide to add it to the TIP, so.
Is the process ideal to get it approved to our projects? Is it just also approved?
It goes through the Vermont Economic Progress.
Yeah, but this would just be something where we go to both expand and. But this would just be something where we go to both expand the TIP, include the youth mall, we would expand, we could at that time say, well, one, there's one student arena, and two, we might be considering some performance efforts and whatever.
Do we have to specify before that word exactly what we are proposing to make to be?
Yeah, I don't know. Helen, when we go before the board to extend the TIP, at that point, we would identify an arena as an additional use, I guess. So Tim was asking, how specific do we need to be?
You mean as it relates to...
The performing arts or the theater, right?
Well, I don't know, I mean, we would present a performer to the, to VEPSE and say this is what the projected cost would be.
Okay, so you'd have to have operation, you'd have to have a plan.
A finance plan.
Okay, okay, so you'd have to have a definite thing that you want to do.
Yep.
Okay.
And then they would, they will say, as they did with the other public buildings, like the library and the city hall, they will say, we agree with you that that's going to bring business into this area and create economic growth, and so we will allow you to finance X percent through TIP.
Okay.
So it could be 30% like the libraries.
Probably is along that line, maybe, maybe more than that. We'll ask for the maximum amount we can, but then they'll approve something.
Can I ask a question? Did I see any people that were used to be with, looking at doing a performance at summer as well, did you see that?
I saw that, but I think it was a higher ground size, a different kind of performance, but yes, they are, they are, and I think that was great, but this is really quite different. Okay.
Okay, I'll invite Tim and, and he'll be on the agenda as a potential action item to approve the week four with feasibility.
Oh, okay, yeah, that would be great, okay. Now, I know Karen Machina came in, so, she likes, yeah, she's from Berkeley. So I'm sure we all have met and chatted and been wowed by Karen on her, as an incumbent on the energy committee, so...
Thanks for reapplying.
We appreciate your reapplying, and an incredible amount of energy and passion to the marketing and the whole concept, so I think we are so beholden to you. One, one thought that I had after reading your answers is, you said, you know, we really could use a few more people to get more stuff done. And so, we have lots of people applying for the energy committee, more than we have spaces, so I'm just wondering if maybe as a council, you might want to address that, even if it's just temporary, or could you just, you know, have more ad hoc members? Maybe you could direct some of these people that...
Right. With our Georgia Energy Enterprise efforts, obviously, it's a monumental project, and our bandwidth individually has been really stretched. It's a great, amazing group of people, and we're always looking for more, either volunteer or people who come and join for a short time to work on a particular project, but yeah, I think I pretty much did say, yes, the more the merrier.
Well, maybe we can consider how we can do that for the committee then, but I certainly for one would be willing to, I think we have to turn away three people applying, if they were... How many others around the committee right now that are not up for... Right, you know?
They didn't have quorum the last time I went, two weeks ago, three or five people or four people, and they didn't have enough to need action on any of them.
Eleven in total, but they're not showing up, right?
We have eleven, I think it's ten.
Ten?
Yeah.
And how active are, I mean, do you need more than ten? I mean, you probably do.
We have, you know, over the past two years, it's, there are projects that we can't get to because each of us are so busy with the projects that we have around the GVP, and people, the people that are on the committee are fairly committed and each have our piece of the pie. I don't know, Helen, what to say about what number would be good, and, you know, the GVP finishes up at the end of this January, however, our plans are to continue on with all the efforts that we're doing, we've always sort of thought it's a win-win situation, whether we win this award or not, all the things that we're doing are benefiting us anyway, and certainly we want to keep going with our programming, so.
Well, maybe we can encourage the people that we have to say no to, to just come in and show you a volunteer member and...
My first year on the committee, I just showed up every meeting and sort of made a nuisance of myself, took my energy, and when a spot opened up, I was ready and anxious to jump on board, so, yeah, that'd be great.
Anyone else have any questions? Done a great job.
Thank you.
That's really, it's possible.
It's been sort of my inch to do the community outreach, and to, I mean, there's so many smart people in the room, and they've taught me so much about energy and the issues that we're facing, but I feel like I was really beneficial just because I'm an outreachy kind of person, and I like event planning, and so it's been really fun to find my way to help in that.
But personally, within your own household, can you just share in 30 seconds what you did in one year?
Sure, we saved $1,200 in one year by, we're a family of five, I have three teenagers, and we had a home energy audit, and we played, made some games out of how much we can save energy, we had family nights with no electricity, and we have teenagers who are assigned to make sure everything's unplugged at the end of the night, and, yeah, in the course of a year, we saved $1,000 in our electricity bill.
Great, thank you.
Do you have any advice for how to place a water flow restrictor in a teenager's shower?
And I'll tell you a story, I have a very small hot water tank at my house. I replaced the one that my husband and my, one of my teenage sons uses without telling them, and I heard about it, and my husband actually said, "It's the one good thing in my life, you know, my shower," and I was like, "Wow, that's sad." But I said, "Just give it a week, if you give it a week, you will forget, you won't remember the difference." And there are some high-efficiency showerheads, which I like to call them high-efficiency rather than low-flow, that are rain shower types, they have massage ones now, they're not your father's Oldsmobile, they're really much better now, so I would just do it and wait a week, and then if you can't stand it, have a, you know, a discussion, but that'd be my advice, Tim.
Thank you.
Do that last.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. They forgot. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. If there's no other questions, okay.
Thanks.
Uh, let's see. Who is, oh, Grant Towns? Grant Towns?
Yeah.
Hi, and Grant, you're interested in the energy committee, too?
Yeah, I've definitely been volunteering with them for two years.
All right.
So I'm kind of one of the people that is in it no matter what, so.
You need to win it.
Yeah.
No, this is Grant, this has been a volunteer for a year. One thing, you said now you're in Burlington, do you live in Burlington now?
Yeah, I live in Burlington, but grew up in South Burlington. My dad connected me with the energy committee a couple of years ago.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I think it was actually Karen closed on Frontboard Forum that led me to the energy committee.
Do we require residency?
I think we require residency.
Yeah.
I was misled, that's all right.
So you can continue to volunteer.
Thanks very much, everybody.
Yes, we had, we see you volunteering. Yeah, you want to move, Karen?
Karen's got a little...
Two guys at the energy committee.
All right. Okay, we got, Barbara Devine, Jeremy King. Yeah, is anyone here to be interviewed? Those are the only two I think we have not. Oh, yes, you are.
Kane Smart?
Oh, yeah, good, I'm sorry, yes. Okay. Yeah. So Kane, as I understand, you're an attorney with lots of experience, but you're new to the city?
I'm new to the city, relatively new. Yeah, 2013, and I have a much more experience than that. I've been practicing attorney since 2010. Prior to that, I clerked for Judge Derek Anthony Murnau for, I graduated from BLHS in 2009, so, a little more than three, but more experience began.
Is there something important we should know about you that we didn't ask?
Not that I didn't try to explain in my letter and the answers to the questions. You know, I'm new to South Burlington, and I'm new to Vermont, so I'm still learning a lot about the state and municipalities, but I, when I went to school, I learned to get back to my community, and I did that in Waterbury, and since coming here, there's been a gap, and I'm looking to fill it, and I have no experience and, I wouldn't say expertise, but interest and passion in land use and development, and that's why I think that DRV is a pretty nice fit for me.
So are there any other areas that you might be interested in, or, I mean, it sounds like, and understandably so, you want to use your experience and passion and interest and extend it to the volunteer part of life?
You know, I would be open to a discussion. You know, I originally wanted to be a member of the DRV in library, and I moved on myself on the planning commission instead, and I stuck it off for three years, and then we moved, but I always wondered, you know, what it would have been like if I had held out for a position on the DRV, and that's kind of the perspective I'm bringing, I mean, I'm open to it, but, you know, there were two positions?
Yes, there are.
I'm assuming you've got more than two.
We do, we have five. So you may have to have, that's really what your purse is set on, we certainly will consider you in the mix, but next year's another year, and probably somebody's turned this up, so it's not a forever...
You seem like a perfect fit, there's a lot of really qualified applicants, I really hope you're interested again next year, too.
I am keeping my eyes open to the whole thing in the other day, and I missed it the first year, I saw it the second year and didn't act in time, and this year I was waiting.
Well, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So this begs the inevitable question because of your practice, how often do you think you would have a conflict of interest serving the DRV with applicants that come up that you might be associated with, to either directly or tangentially?
I mean, I think it's possible, I mean, in Vermont, but one thing I've learned is it's a small state, and you've got to accomplish things, you sometimes need to really question whether there's a conflict and not just recuse yourself. I foresee conflicts, you know, if a firm is representing a developer, or if I'm representing a developer, not that, I'm not sure there is an actual conflict more often than not, and, you know, admittedly, it will happen, but I would question, you know, over the span of the two years of how many applicants the DRV has seen, how many DRM has been involved with, and there's, you know, maybe a handful, you know, if they work around it, in my experience.
That happens now, there's seven members, they just step up, stand up on the table and exit the room, right? I just was looking at the line of work, right, and just what frequency that might happen, you know, I think in the current DRV, there's, I was doing, looking, I had to recuse once, and previous DRV members had to recuse at various times, even I've had to, so, it happens. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, so, who do we have left? Anyone else? Barbara Devine, Jeremy King. I'd sort of like to go for a dress from here, I had a reservation, and they're calling up. All right, well, we can, when they return to...
Will we be able to do the executive session before the announced time?
I don't think we need an executive session. But what I would like to announce before we address that, for those of you who have come in since the beginning of the meeting, I made this announcement earlier, and anticipating that there'd be a number of people who wanted to speak about getting the lawsuit or not, there are two sign-up sheets in the back. One is, I ask you if you are wishing to speak in favor of joining the lawsuit, sign up on that sheet, the other sheet, if you're opposed to that, sign up on that, and we will alternate hearing from people, and we'll start with individuals who live in South Burlington first, and we'll see how many people we can... Those experts, wait till we have a speaker down tonight. Yes, if they wish, and you can sign up, and then if you don't think your comments are needed, when I call your names, you can just say, "It's already been said," and it will just go down to the next person on that sheet. And just as curiosity, and if I'm wrong point right now, but I, because I think we're almost done, and I hope we take a clap in the head before we start, because I think...
Soon.
But as we were coming toward the end, and we were directed to give options of what each of the counselors would bring to the table, my information was not included because it wasn't in the form of a resolution, because I was looking at the non-research slide and felt that there was suggestion, so that wasn't included in the packet tonight? It was, no, it's not included. Oh, and it printed?
The memo that I did had everybody's comments, and that's posted in the packet and is posted on our website for the public. Four of you came forward with resolutions, there's actually five resolutions, the original one from last week that I printed, so that you can pick and choose which one will work off for tonight and have a hard copy of that. So everybody's comments are in the packet, where there's a resolution offered, it's printed so that you can work off of, I don't know how you're going to proceed.
This almost appears as though these are the only things to be considered, as opposed to something else that with questions and suggestions and steps to take forward that I propose, that has not been given consideration.
Well, if you choose to, it's in, everybody has that, so it's in your packet, and if you choose to go in that direction tonight...
Well, I'd like to consider this part of, if you want to call it number six, you can call it number six, but it needs to be included.
So I see comments from four of us, but Counselor Barrett produced a resolution this afternoon that wasn't in the packet, did Counselor Barrett also provide any other remarks or feedback that should be shared with all of us at this point?
No, I think everyone will have a chance to pose their questions, discuss how I envision, discuss their proposal.
The agenda also does say possible executive session to consider.
It does, I guess we can consider whether we need one, a question might come up and we may want to, but I didn't think we needed to automatically have an executive session. But council and our legal council believe that that's appropriate, we will have one.
Seven questions, if you want me to ask them, with a caution that they might be more appropriate in executive session, it's your choice as to whether or not we should discuss them first.
What is your, should we take a five-minute break and then hope the three remaining people show up? Okay, so Barbara Devine, has she walked in yet? Oh, good! Well, we need you, so good. Would you like to interview her, or do you want to have a break and then, why don't we have a break, and then maybe Jeremy King will also show up? Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break. Is that enough? Is that enough? Back into order for the special meeting of June 14th. We're going to continue and finish up with two more interviewees. I know one is here, Barbara Devine, so if you will, please come down. And Barbara, you are applying to be on the library board.
That's right.
And as I understand from you, from the questions you answered, for the application, you majored in public communication and journalism and seemed to have some skills at a library that's looking to raise certain values, my favorite.
I don't know if my skills are that.
So I thought it's, pardon me?
I don't know if my skills are that.
So if you start. So if you could please, I mean, I thought it sounded like you had some great skills and certainly an interest, so we have an opening, so it looks like there's a real chance.
A more body.
Yeah, well, no, you are much more than a more body. So I'm wondering if there's anything in addition that you think would be, that wasn't in your answer. It would be helpful for us to know or?
Sure, sure. I've lived in the South Burlington community now for about almost three and a half years and really want to be active in the community and I've taken some time to do that, so I thought this was a great opportunity because it married my desire to do something with the community along with something I love, which are libraries. I put that in my application. You're very near and dear to my heart and have been all my life, an avid reader, avid user of our library. And I think my skill set in terms of just career and background would be really helpful. Really want to be a part of something, part of our community.
Okay, well, this is a good time if you want to.
And it's great to see the support for the library application. I'm sure that's why everybody came out today. I had no idea.
The community, they really care about its library.
Really great to see that.
For this position. Jay's going to be accepting the check from the way out, right? He's going to stand by the door and if anyone wants to contribute, you're more than welcome. I hope you all brought your checkbooks. So does anyone else have any questions on the council?
Where was this library that you lived so much?
I was born and raised in Schenectady, New York, and I just grew up, my mom taking me to the library and it's just, I remember the smell and the sounds and the sight, it was just a really important part of the time that she and I spent together. And then growing up, like I said, I've always been an avid book reader and just loved use bookstores, going to stores and purchasing books and I know it sounds really corny, but it truly is. I've just been looking for an opportunity to volunteer and I volunteer a lot in patchwork, different things, and I really am trying to find something that I'm passionate about. And when I saw the opening for the library board, I thought it would be a nice match.
That's what you do at Southern Generation?
Yeah, sure. My title is Customer Strategy and Planning Manager and Shopper Marketing Specialist, which is a really long-winded way of saying I work with our sales team, I'm the internal voice for our sales team, which is throughout the country, we have salespeople in different areas, and I'm their voice internally. I represent their needs and anything else that they may require. I also help prepare presentations for them, do research, a lot of financial analysis. And then I also do shopper marketing, which is a fancy way of saying, working with natural and tender retailers on marketing promotions, so coming up with means of selling our products with a limited budget. So we do social online promotions where we do washer dryer giveaways and things like that. So it's a bit of marketing, a bit of sales management, a bit of financial analysis.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for applying.
Thanks, everyone, fair enough.
I hope, I think we'll be seeing more of these, so thank you.
Thank you.
And then is Jeremy King, has he arrived? Okay, so that appears as if we have completed the interview scheduled for today and we will continue with them next Monday, complete them and announce our decisions. So I will move on to item six, which is a response to an alleged open meeting law violation asserted by an old Citro. And this was directed to the Attorney General, Mr. Sorrell, and I've been told that it's, since it was alleged or included three members of the council that we need to address that. And I would address it by saying that I do not believe there was any challenges or violations of the open, the public open meeting law. There were conversations, they were undertaken individually. I did speak to Tim Barrett and I did call and speak with Megan Emery, but at no time did the three of us ever gather as a group to discuss anything on any agenda. And my understanding is that if we had, that would have been a violation, but that that did not take place, so there was no violation. If Megan or Tim want to confirm that, you can.
I confirm that never at any time did the three of us meet without there being a warning and there was also no telephone conversations freeway. That this certainly was something that I think, just like you, I was surprised to see on the agenda last Monday. I expected on this week's agenda from what I had heard, so I learned when you learned that it was going to be on the agenda last Monday. I was under the impression that we were going to have a week as a council to kind of adjust it before the one meeting, but because our legal counsel suggested timing as a concern, he recommended to our chair that it be placed on the agenda last Monday. So I learned when you learned that it was going to be on the agenda last Monday and prior to that telephone call from my chair, I had really not had much conversation at all with my fellow colleagues on the council, so I just wanted to put that out there.
I had a call from Helen and just one call. And at no time did the three of us have any kind of a telecon or communication simultaneously or in person in any kind.
May I ask a question on this or is this just you making a statement, we move on?
I guess you can ask a question.
All right. So my concern is my life has been turned upside down over the last nine days because this is just blindsided me. So I have heard, I'm aware of the issue, please, I just want to keep this civil. I'm trying to find a way forward that we can all work on this. I have heard that this was brought to the attention of Kevin Dorn on Friday, May 27th. I had no notion of this until Friday, June 2nd. This is a huge issue of regional impact of importance. Can I ask in the future that if a, an issue that is of known widespread public interest that is going to be taken up as soon as possible in council and public at large could be made aware of it?
I will try my best to do that. I think things can always come up that are of an emergency nature and we don't always have the luxury of weeks or months of discourse before we have to make a decision. When I raised the issue with Kevin, it was to give him an FYI that I was thinking about this. I did not discuss it with anyone else, but I thought it made sense for me to share as the chair. We have a slightly different relationship, I guess, than other council members and we meet occasionally to talk about all sorts of things that aren't then shared with the council till the appropriate time. So I will make every effort, as I kept saying, was not intended, even though it's been alleged that it was a devious, going behind the curtain, cloak and dagger kind of discussion and.
I just hope you understand the concern. The concern that this was presented as a very time pressing matter, that we need to act on it and.
That's true.
The city manager had a full week, I found out about this when I landed in Washington, DC for a three day weekend for work obligations. I just would say in the future, please, if I could ask, as a policy, standing by whoever is on this council, if the city manager is made aware of a known issue of widespread regional impact, as soon as that instruction has been given to the city manager to take action, we're admitting our city attorney to perform resources, to commit resources, to draft a resolution, that it be made known to the entire council at that moment.
See, I guess, okay, we're getting into the discussion a little bit, but I don't think that's.
Okay, if we stop and just, I just want to make sure that we understand that the agenda I have before us is the open meeting law violation. I just, so I want to make sure we don't stray too far off of that first.
But I also. Well, I think your suggestion can be considered and I appreciate it. And you have a question?
I do. And perhaps, and again, it's unprocessed and I have to say that, Helen, I'm a former chair of the council. I understand that we do have an opportunity to meet with the city manager more regularly than the individual members do, though we can by asking to go in and talk about it. I just found it interesting, and I believe it was the press that reported it this way, that a citizen came and asked you to take this on, to bring this issue up. And then you were also asked by two other councilors. I just found it so interesting to think that all of this took place within such a short period of time and then to leave Tom an eye out. Forty percent of your council doesn't even get notified on it until something two hours before it's going to be presented.
Well, fortunately, we've had 10 days now.
You know, Helen, you can put that in there, but I sat with you, you want, I chaired it, you said we move things, two things here too quickly. We should be like the legislature and move it slowly and take items. You also had the point that you wanted to have 60 days agenda items out there. And, you know, we spent, we spent more time, I have to tell you, deciding on a pocket park and whether we were going to put four swings and a slide in up in.
They're correct.
Thank you. Then we have spent on this. We had meetings up there and all this. We spent more time talking about parking and students up on East Terrace than this and I think this rises to a level far above those. And I have, you know, and I know you don't want discussion on it, but I want that on the record to say that I feel, and because I've had three individuals call me and say, because one person comes to you, that means that that person, their agenda can get advanced or their thought, hold on, that that person can get advanced? Now, unless you reported wrong in the paper, Helen, and, you know, I respect you, but I mean, if it is that it was that, then someone said, I can come before them and ask for something, it'll go forward?
The only way to join as a party plaintiff is to be asked. And that was a plaintiff asking.
When?
When she probably contacted me a month ago, maybe a little bit more ago.
I feel like this just should have been communicated with the council.
I hear you. I think you've expressed this on Facebook, on Front and Front porch forum for numerous times at the meeting last week, again, at this.
Well, I haven't announced it at that many places, but you have to know how disappointed I am that this is the type of thing that can happen.
And I'm not trying to scold you, Joe, really. I just want us to move forward in a positive manner. And the last thing I just want to say, and I'll be done with this topic for now, is I've spoken with seven previous city councilors on all sides of this issue and they, they all see this, see concerns of how this very important issue has been presented for a couple of reasons.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on. I think that's all we need to do with that. Okay. So I'd like to move on to item seven, consideration and possible adoption of a resolution to intervene as a plaintiff. And as you all know, there are several, we had asked at the end of the last meeting to have councilors consider what their thoughts were, submit them. They were included in the packet and posted on the website.
Options. We were asked for options.
Different options and some people turn them into resolutions and others, like Pat had some suggestions.
Yes, that is with questions, right.
That's correct.
And suggestions.
Yeah. So I want to start and number one, if there's people that have come in since I last announced this, there are sign up sheets for people who wish to speak at the, after we have heard several people and had some discussion as a council and then we'll ask the public to weigh in. So there's one sheet that is designed for if you are in favor of joining the lawsuit and another if you are opposed to that. And we'll go through the public input process, similar to many ways that we, similar to ways that we've done in the legislature in the past. So we'll pick a person from one perspective and then from the other perspective and go back and forth. Again, the time will be limited. So is there anyone who's not had a chance to sign up if they wish to make a statement? Oh, because the sign up is in the, oh, okay. So if, and anyone who's signed up can also decide later that they don't wish to speak and we'll just go to the next person. So we'll try to keep that very organized, better than our interview cycle. I just want to also emphasize that I really hope this, both our conversation amongst the council members, this is statements and comments from the public really remain civil. Tom got a threat. I received some pretty annoying and gross, actually, I hung up on a person who just was going through a litany of squares. Well, and so we all got them.
We all got them.
So that's, to me, is not civil discourse. And interestingly enough, Tom and I are Facebook friends and he likes a lot of things and he liked a comment that came from, I can't remember where, and I thought it was very apropos to tonight. And the comment that he liked and I liked it too, because I think it makes a whole lot of sense. And the, you know, those little truisms that you get on Facebook. It says 10% of conflicts are due to difference of opinion, 10%. 90% of conflicts are due to the wrong tone of voice. I think the tone of voice is not just the verbal voice, but also the written voice. And unfortunately, I think the tone has not been particularly civil and I think has led to some of the conflict that is before us. We certainly have difference of opinion and that's the basis of democracy and that's what we all appreciate about living here, being able to speak out against your government, against your community, against a concept that you don't agree with. So I'm hoping that, I think that's what we're doing tonight. And I would ask that all of you, as passionate as you are, as strongly as you hold your beliefs as strongly as you do, that your comments will be civil, that you won't direct personal attacks to people, because whether you like my resolution or dislike it, I think let's talk about the resolution and what we're trying to accomplish versus who was the generator of that resolution and if there's an ulterior motive. So I hope we can all adhere to that. It looks like we have 36 people, well, a little less, I'm sorry, but around that, 34 people who would like to speak and I think we'll have plenty of time to hear from everyone. I'd like to start, though, with the legal counsel for the city of South Burlington, Jim Barlow.
Which matter are we discussing now, please?
I'm asking, there will be three individuals to present some information that were questions raised, both at the last meeting by the public or questions raised from some of Pat's questions as well as some questions that the public raised or we have received through different emails. So I thought it would be helpful to get some facts on the table that are important to our conversation.
I am not an attorney. This is a new world for me and I'm applying a lot of new laws on every action I take in this role. I have some questions.
I have some questions that I'm not sure if need to be made either in public forum or an executive session before we proceed with discussing this resolution, the Zibnoff lawsuit. Would you like me to ask them now?
Jim, do you think we should-
I think you have to ask the question, and I have to contemplate the answer, and I may have to evaluate whether or not it's something that can be disclosed to the public.
Okay, is that, okay?
Before we go any further, and I am not attacking anybody-
Perhaps he will address some of the questions.
This has to do with a conflict of interest and whether or not all councillors on this body can deliberate and take action on this lawsuit resolution.
I really don't think it's-
The plaintiffs of this private lawsuit are the Stop the F-35 Coalition, and they stand to recover the cost of this action, including attorney's fees, be granted further relief as the court deems just and proper. Before we take this vote, we need to know, and I'm going to point to a specific councillor at this point, based on the answers that I would classify as evasive at the last meeting, as well as other information I have, as to whether or not councillor Emery is a party to this lawsuit. This matter needs to be cleared up before we go on. This is important. This is a participant, if a participant is a party to a private lawsuit, and were to use their influence of this council in order to persuade and commit the city's good name and our dollars to that action, that needs to be known by the public before discussion occurs or action is taken.
I will answer no, but Jim, is that a legal matter?
I have more evidence to introduce.
Okay, well-
I think it's a matter that's proper for public discussion.
So here are six packets outlining multiple emails, which I can read to all of you, one is recent as this past November twenty-fourth, where councillor Emery, in the Stop the F-35 Google Groups forum, which is established in another email, shows that it is the discussion forum for the Stop the F-35 Coalition, says, and I quote the following-
And where is this in the packets? Because this is the first, I haven't seen it.
I've had three days to complete this, because I didn't know what was going to be on the agenda.
Okay, I'm just saying, you haven't seen it.
I've had nine days to pull this together and raise a family. All right, so this is on your page, they're highlighted. I would like to read this.
On which page?
This is on page-
Where, the little sticky, Emery?
Yeah, so this is-
Is that the page? So that one, Tom, or in the first two?
Right here, there are no page numbers.
Well, is it page number one? I mean, there's three-
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, the thirteenth page.
Identify what it says, if it's the first one.
Midway down, it says Megan E.E., which is established as Megan Emery's account in this forum, to the other email.
Eight, I'm sorry, what page?
Thirteenth. It states-
No, I'm not trying to discuss, I just want to give us the right page.
I'll give you the copy.
Is it page, I mean, some, or?
A question, this is Megan Emery addressing the Stop the F-35 closed Google Groups. Says, dear all, a question is the missing EIS in two thousand eight, when, this was dated November twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen. A question is missing, EIS in two, is the EIS in two thousand eight, when Block S twenty-five F sixteen's were replaced by Block thirty F sixteen's, being included in the lawsuit against the U.S. Air Force? I just talked to the lawyer my father, who says that this could be included in the brief. I'm eager for an update on legal proceedings. I remember reviewing requests that Supreme Court did take up the appeal for Vermont Supreme Court's decision not to grant our argument for the Act two fifty review of the basin, but there's another suit. When does the trial start? Will Jim Dumont be representing us? Will Jim Dumont be representing us? Could the two thousand eight oversight be included in the arguments? Thanks for any information available. I have another email from October two thousand and fourteen from this same group that also shows that Megan Emery was coordinating fundraising and funds, and the commitment of funds, as well as the permitting process in Burlington to organize for protests. I have every reason to believe in eighteen emails, active only from a Google search, that Megan Emery is a party to this lawsuit, and cannot commit or take action or engage in discussion on this matter in her role as a city councillor.
We should raise a pause on whatever the comment is.
I can read our currently adopted conflict of interest policy, which is quite specific on this matter. A financial or personal interest. No city agent shall have any personal interest or financial interest in a transaction in which the city is a participant. Whenever the performance of a city agent's, and the city agent is defined earlier in the motion to include elected officials, as well as committee members, and also employees. Whenever the performance of a city agent's official duties requires that individual to take action in respect to any matter in which the individual has a personal or financial interest, he or she shall disclose the nature and extent of such an interest, and shall be disqualified from in any manner participating in the city's consideration or disposition of that matter.
I will say that the emails you pointed out have nothing to do with the current lawsuit.
Of course you would say that.
F-35, Stop the F-35, Jim Dumont is representing you, the Stop the F-35 Coalition.
This is another lawsuit, the Act two fifty.
Then it says there's another suit. So Megan, you did answer the question directly last time. Are you a member of the Stop the F-35 Coalition? Have you ever been? And could you please give us a full and comprehensive disclosure of your involvement as plaintiff in this private lawsuit that we are now being asked under a rush and obsequious manner to conjoin the city to, under an artificial sense of urgency?
Okay. I am happy to say, just like I told you last week, that I had attended, when I wasn't a councillor, meetings of this group, that the lawsuit that I am only familiar with, as you can see, is this Act two fifty lawsuit. I have not been privy to the lawsuit that is going before the judge in, I don't even know where it is, on July fifth.
There is a YouTube video from two thousand and thirteen, put out by the Stop the F-35 Coalition, which includes Megan Emery's testimony. Every reasonable person would conclude that Megan Emery is part of the plaintiff of this lawsuit, and cannot participate in this discussion, nor take action in her role in this capacity.
I don't believe there's, she's, well, I have been told that there is really not a membership for the F-35.
She refers to our membership and us, as a reasonable person.
The Act two fifty lawsuit that went for the Vermont Supreme Court-
And the other lawsuit.
Is there a difference between being able to post to an open or a closed site?
This is a closed group that has been forwarded to the Save Our Skies Open Group. There is evidence in the email thread where Megan Emery is posting via this closed group, which claims, on another page, to be the voice in discussion of the Stop the F-35 Coalition. Any reasonable person would conclude that Megan Emery is heavily invested in this lawsuit.
I am not, I think we're relying from some testimony or some information that-
I am requesting that Megan Emery recuse herself from this vote.
I have nothing to do with the lawsuit currently in question. I have nothing to-
Have you ever?
No, I have never-
You have never had anything to do with the Stop, you've attended meetings, you've posted-
I told you, when I was a citizen, between two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, I did attend meetings. I told you that already. This is, maybe I got you for the purpose, but I told you that last week.
I would have loved to talk to you about this side of Megan, but this was thrown on me.
Oh, I think you have plenty of time to talk to me.
I move that Jim Barlow issue a formal legal opinion after fully divesting, fully digging into this entire notion as to whether, no, I move that a third-party lawyer, not involved in this, render an opinion on whether or not Megan Emery-
Jim, if you want to make the comment-
This is improper.
No, this is theater.
This is improper.
This is theater.
It is improper.
I have nothing to gain from this lawsuit.
If you have already committed, move the ten thousand dollars-
I think when you talk about financial-
Or personal interest.
Personal, financial interest. I think we will find, when we have the chance to hear from Jim Dumont, that whatever money that might come from this successful suit by, with this suit, would go, is not going to come back to Megan, or any individual-
Personal or financial interest, that multiple points in the lawsuit get called-
What possibly could be the financial interest that she would personally receive from the lawsuits that will only-
Legal expenses.
Can we have one person at least answer the question? I find it really hard to have discourse if you interrupt before I answer the question. And I think I let you move along with yours. My understanding is of the, and this is why Mr. Dumont is going to explain what the lawsuit does and does not do. But whatever financial interest might occur would be not to an individual person, and the financial-
That is contradicted in the claims of the lawsuit filed in two thousand and thirteen, which says any member of the coalition would stand to gain financial reimbursement for any loss of home values.
That's why I thought it would be helpful to have the lawyer who actually wrote the thing explain to us what is or is not, because I think, as you noted earlier, Tom, you were not a lawyer.
In the DRB, when a matter comes before the DRB, where a city member has an active and engaged interest in that-
I do not, I do not. I have answered the question. I do not.
With disinformation. There is an email as of this past February-
I think sending emails is a little bit different than having a financial interest in a-
I move, I made a motion, that we seek third-party legal advice and guidance as to whether or Megan Emery can participate in this discussion.
This is one of the reasons that we adopted an ethics policy for the city.
I'd like to have the lawyer's answer.
And most of it, Megan, was your warning to come up with that.
I'm happy to have the lawyer answer the question, then.
Well, and the motion, then.
The February has to do with the wind, the natural wind. Okay.
So we have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
Yes, because if we are going to have one party speak to us, I would hope that we would have a neutral party speak on this, or that we could have someone speak to both sides.
Well, we have Jim Barlow, is he neutral?
I'm neutral.
He's representing us.
I-
Well, you're representing the city, which we obviously have a division of minds on this.
I have concerns with that. I recently got the impression that Jim Barlow sees that there is a majority on this council, especially on this topic, that has-
You're on, Tom, Mr. Chad is out of line to accuse-
I'm not accusing Jim Barlow.
Yes, you are.
There are concerns with how this action is coming about.
I would ask you to retract that and-
I retract if I accuse the entire group.
It's really inappropriate.
I would like, I retract if I phrase it in a way that was at all, I apologize.
No, I, Jim has acted in each step of this entire proceeding at my direction, never at any time independently of me. Any responsibility for this goes on me, and me alone. Acted at my request.
That is what I have to say.
Expert legal advisor.
Then is there an opportunity for us to hear from a higher level on this? Because, I mean-
If I'm going, I don't actually know what higher level there might be.
Okay, can I explain?
No, you appointed me as the city attorney, and I'd like to have an opportunity to speak my piece if I may, ma'am, here. I've been appointed by this body as the city attorney for the city of South Burlington. My obligation is to provide legal counsel to the city through its elected representatives. I am not a partisan in this matter. I feel as though I can render an objective opinion. Now, I do, the body does act through the will of its majority, and therefore I have to acknowledge that there appear to be three members who occasionally might be in favor of something, and recognizing that, I have to take action and direct it on it. Sometimes that is a clear vote motion, other times it's just sort of reading where things might go. But nevertheless, I am able to render a decision or render an opinion, notwithstanding the individual interests of the ordinance. Okay? On this particular matter, I think that what the controlling document is, is the city's conflict of interest and ethics policy. And I think the operative sentence is found in section four, it is the second section, second sentence in that, which states, whenever the performance of a city agent's official duties, official duties require the individual to take action in respect to any matter in which the individual has a personal or financial interest, he slash she shall disclose the nature and extent of such interest, and shall be disqualified in any manner from participating in the city's consideration or disposition of that matter. And it previously, as I recall, says that a city agent is defined to include a city employee, officer, or member of a city board or commission, hereafter referred to as a city agent. So, in my opinion, Ms. Emery would be a city agent, would be subject to this policy that the city council has defined. If Ms. Emery is in fact a member of the Stop the F-35 Coalition, or has participated or acted on their behalf, she may well have a personal interest in the outcome of this matter, which is something that the policy does address. It addresses both financial and personal. Having a personal obligation, personal interest, her obligation, if she does, would be to first disclose, oh, I think the words, yes, shall disclose the nature and extent of such interest, and shall be disqualified in any manner participating in the city's consideration or disposition of that matter. Well, there is nothing in the policy that allows the other council members to vote Ms. Emery off the island, so to speak, to make that determination. So the determination whether or not she has a personal interest that rises to the level of conflict, and whether she should be disqualified are hers, come in. And she can do so-
She could choose to take action on this matter where she is a plaintiff in this lawsuit.
I am not a plaintiff in this lawsuit.
My point here is that she can choose to, she can choose to refuse herself or not, depending on her perception of whether she has a personal interest in this and should disqualify herself.
I don't see where, anywhere where it says an individual can self-assess. I see hard-written shells. This shall not occur. This is a stated, obvious conflict of interest, because these documents show her engaging, discussing, strategizing, committing, and moving funds.
I don't agree with you. The evidence may well show that. I'm just saying that there's no remedy in this document, except for the voluntary refusal of counsel.
I don't see voluntary anywhere. She is obligated to disclose, full disclosure, of all of her activities.
Yes, but I don't see any way for any of the other members of the council to force her to refuse herself, so.
And I have disclosed, I said, when I was not on the council, between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fourteen, I did attend events.
If this goes forward, I'm going to issue a public records request. All of your activities and actions will be Stop the F-35 Coalition.
You can threaten me, I don't think this is a place for that.
Okay, let's stick to this issue. We have a motion on the floor, which you're saying we can't-
What if it was a motion that you might have stated?
Tom, what was your motion?
Do you have that recorded, Sue?
To receive a third-party opinions from the lawyer, as to whether Megan Emery can serve on the city council in this matter.
Okay, and that was seconded by the councillor. So are you ready for that question?
Is there more discussion?
On whether, let's stick to the motion, then. This is to receive a third-party, can I vote?
Tom, maybe not. This is a personal interest, I guess, so.
Third-party meaning Mr. Barlow, or some other? I'm fine, I would like to make an amendment to it, that Mr. Barlow is absolutely fine. I could not be to attack integrity by any means. I just am looking for clarity.
So did we just receive that?
You just received that.
So would you like to withdraw that motion?
No, let's have the vote.
Well, no, I'm going to add one more comment. I attended a pizza party with a three-year-old grandchild, when there were three councillors there, and I was whipped by the community, and had a person who was sitting in this audience come right up before the front and say, we should be, you know, shamed, because three of us were there, and we violated open meeting. And I'm looking at this and saying, and Jim, you had to write a statement, you interviewed me, you wrote a statement, thank you very much, and we had to send it to the Attorney General's office. We were reported for being at an energy committee meeting. This rises far above that, and I think, Jim, well, I, you know, and I appreciate that opinion, I would still like something that comes down from a higher level. And perhaps the Attorney General's office needs to weigh in on it.
Okay, I'm sorry, the Attorney General doesn't have any jurisdiction over the city of South Burlington's conflict of interest policy.
I'd like the voters to decide. I'd like to put this matter, entire matter, to the voters. Because I want to discuss them this last election.
If we voted on the lawsuit, we couldn't be sitting here having this conflict now.
We asked, we have a motion.
It's just compounded with how this has been introduced.
We changed the motion?
No, it's not the motion- No, let's let the motion stand with third parties. See what happens.
So are you ready for the question?
Hold on a second. So the question was whether we should...
We should go to a higher body.
You said this, this, you said that this...
A non-city attorney to get another...
Yeah. Somebody who is not reporting to Kevin Dorn, who is taking instruction from this council.
I think his response is adequate, so let's vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The motion stands. So, going back to the council's, council attorney, Barlow, I asked you to please explain to the council as well as the public your thoughts about the resolution and what it...
I'm sorry, which, which resolution?
Well, I think...
The new resolution or which resolution?
I wanted you to explain to us the differences, one between amicus curiae, is that even right, amicus curiae?
Curiae.
As well as becoming a party to the lawsuit.
Sure. Okay. But excuse me, my part was also to not take any legal action, and that should be weighed in as well. And that was mine, in which we are what, number now six?
Fine, well, you'll have the chance to ask that, and you answer this one first. I thought you also asked, or someone wanted to know about amicus curiae, the difference in what...
Typically, when litigation is initiated, it's initiated by a party that is called a plaintiff. And the party that, the party that responds to that litigation is called a defendant, and they are the typical parties to litigation. Occasionally, other defendants are joined if there's multiple parties, multiple possible defendants, they are also named. And then occasionally, more than one individual acts as plaintiff. You can have more than one party bringing the suit. But there's, the notion here is that there are typically plaintiffs, and there are defendants, and they are the parties to the suit. And it is those parties' rights that are determined by the court in litigation. Those parties have full rights to participate in the litigation. So they can participate in asking the court to do things through motions, ask for remedies, ask for relief, including sometimes damages, or orders from the court directing the other party to do things. They are litigants in the fullest sense, and they also have the right to appeal. If they are unhappy with the trial court's decision, that appeal can be brought to an appellate level court. An intervenor, which was what we were talking about last week, was, is a, is a party that wants to ask permission to join the suit typically as a plaintiff, and ask for the right to participate fully as a plaintiff in the lawsuit, and to acquire through that action all of the rights of a plaintiff, including the right to file motions, the right to ask for relief, and the right to appeal. An amicus is a different level or different type of participation. An amicus is typically someone or a group who is not a party to the suit, but nevertheless has some important interest that they want the judge to consider. That may be an interest that is different from or not represented by the parties. So for example, it's often, it's common that nonprofits enter parents' litigation as an amicus to present the arguments and perspective of that group. Municipalities can do it. It's typically done at the appellate level and not at the trial court level, but there is an opportunity to do that at the trial court level as there is here. GBIC, Greater Burlington Industrial Corporation, has entered this particular suit as amicus, and in doing so, has been given the opportunity to file responsive briefs, being responsive to the arguments raised by the parties. But as amicus, they cannot ask the court for relief or jump-dip relief or damages, cannot move the court to do anything or direct, ask the court do anything in particular. As amicus, an amicus cannot appeal the court's decisions. Okay? But if the decision is appealed, amicus could ask to be allowed to participate as amicus again at the appellate level. So it's, it's an opportunity to present a different opinion or to add to the arguments that have already been made. It is granted at the discretion of the judge or of the court. It is not guaranteed. Are there any other questions?
Do you know if with this particular case, that there was a deadline to file amicus?
Don't know that.
Can we become an amicus curate in the appeal process?
Yes. There's an opportunity to do so. It's not guaranteed that it would be...
So that would allow for more time for the community to be heard, to hold a proper public forum?
It presumes also that there would be an appeal, which they may not do.
Well, then the amicus, various points, for example, if it was just sound and noise, could be limited?
Yes. And typically, an amicus cannot raise new issues, can only address the issues that have previously been raised, but can present different perspectives or arguments on those issues.
What's the drawback of only leaving the option to join as an amicus curate in the event that there is an appeal that might involve or may cause the city of South Burlington to be interested at that time?
So...
With the drawback of not filing amicus curate now as opposed to filing at a later date after the public's been heard if there's appeal?
The downside, again, it presumes that there will be an appeal. And the downside now is foregoing the opportunity to participate in the discussion and to potentially influence the judge's decision.
Have you fully diagnosed or assessed all ten counts and determined why Winuski, after eighteen months of exhaustive deliberations, determined after a valid measure, to just join one count on the noise exposure?
I have no...
Do you think that's due diligence that would be appropriate before we joined to a lawsuit or become a amicus curate?
It's within the council's discretion and decision-making authority to enter the suit or not. It's in the council's discretion to invite the public to weigh in on that, on that decision-making and whether or not to hold a series of forums or how long, how much public petition there might be.
The city of Winuski joined on just the one count because the new F-35 expected noise exposure zone extends deeper into Winuski, which affects them on noise concerns and less in South Burlington. So after that exhaustive process with full public comment and testimony and valid measure, they determined to join on just one count of noise because the new noise zone, the new noise effect space affects more of Winuski. So after that deliberative process, they came up with that.
You think we've done, what, how much have we done in deliberations in considering this matter?
How much deliberation do you want to do is completely within the authority of five members of this council that's not mine, the past judgment on it?
I think the public also wants to be heard.
Well, we haven't. And, and one of the points that you brought up, and if I heard you correctly, I believe it, was that this suit could go through and we could join after the fact if there was an appeal under an amicus curate.
Yep. Yes.
And the last time someone was made party to this suit was people 29th of 15, if I'm correct?
Yes.
You're kind of coming in at more than the 11th hour, weren't you, say?
In my opinion, yes.
Very short, and considering this is going to oral arguments on July 5th?
Yes.
And we got a long weekend there?
Yes.
If we were to join as a...
Doesn't give much time for our outside attorney to be prepared for this or to get it to Judge Crawford without asking for some extension of time. Would you agree?
That's correct. We are very significant, would be under a very significant time limitation if we did not ask for additional time to file from the judge.
File in what respect? As an intervenor or as an...
As an intervener.
Okay. How about amicus curate?
I think we, we're also under pretty significant time restraint to file as an amicus. I mean, this has been going on, folks, for years, and we're down to the last couple of weeks here, and, and it's my, my obligation to you and to the cities to do the very best job, if that's what you choose to do, to do the very best job that can be done. We're under a very significant time restraint in trying to make the best arguments that we can make.
But we're also going to be having outside, our outside legal...
I practice that in the area of municipal law, and I've never in my life been involved in litigation over the National Environmental Policy Act. I have an obligation under rules of procedure, rules of professional conduct to provide the city with competent representation. And in order to do that, I have to get help from other people. Okay? So, so the notion that this is going to outside councils is because it's in the city's interest that this go to outside councils. That's what the city chooses to do.
Jim, I fully understand that, and there are kinds of, we go outside for legal counsel on a number of issues. I just can't want...
As infrequently as we can because it costs a whole bottom one.
But we have, right. And I'm looking and saying, I don't want to put a checkbook out there that is obligating the citizens of South Burlington when we haven't vetted the other pieces that we need to do in that area.
When we're talking about, when we're talking about personal and financial interests, could you summarize for us the scope...
I think we disposed of that already. I think the motion was voted on.
Yes, no, but the scope of the complaint in the suit and the scope of the requests.
I'm not sure what you're...
In the suit, in the complaint?
Yes.
Brought forward by the plaintiffs, what is, what is the scope of the complaint and what is the scope of the requests?
Okay. The complaint originally, perhaps Mr. Dumont might speak better to this since he drafted the complaint. The complaint originally, it was a first complaint, and then it was amended, and the second amended complaint. The second amended complaint had ten counts. I have a tough time shuffling through my papers to list them all out, but they include counts for noise, compliance with local zoning and planning standards, and also counts for safety.
Would you please clarify on the answer?
There are ten, only eight are actually at issue right now, two have been withdrawn.
My concern is our attorney doesn't quite understand all the counts in this lawsuit.
He said he'd have to pull out the...
Well, I have to, Tom, I can, I can pull them really quickly, but I don't keep them right at the top of my head, you know? The complaint's about thirty pages long, so...
It's three hundred and fifty pages.
No.
Sure.
You are going to be here for the response.
We are. I'd be glad of Tom if he'd like to...
And what is the scope of the requests? Is it as Mr. Chitnent has stated publicly, in spite of your response, and again, an executive session last year, to permanently...
Page 173 of the last page.
To permanently, what is it?
Permanent injunction against the operation of the F-35 DTU.
Is it a permanent injunction of the...
I think we best, why don't you ask Mr. Dumont?
Could I also motion that we invite Mr. Roy to also come up, who is also a lawyer that is, we are not yet a party to this suit. So I would like Mr. Roy, who is also here in the audience, to also be able to...
He would be free to make a public comment, for sure. We're having two lawyers. I think that's probably enough. If we get three, we're going to have three different...
That's, we're not going to hear from a lawyer that's totally invested in, related to a lawsuit that we're not a party to while we're considering joining the party?
We're hearing from the council or the city's...
If you'd like me to review the counts, I can do that for you now.
I have a good idea, so I'm just...
I'm happy to have your response.
You would like to hear, I mean, the first count is failure to adequately, adequately address mitigation under NEPA. This goes to the concern about noise mitigation and whether or not the Air Force adequately considered certain mitigation measures in the EIA, in the environmental impact statement.
And that's the one Winuski joined.
Yes. Count two is failure to address conflict with state and local law under NEPA. There's an obligation to give consideration to state law as well as local zoning bylaws, for example.
Where is the one right?
Count three is failure to address socio-economic impacts under NEPA. Count four is failure to identify and help evaluate harm to historic properties. Count five is failure to consider current management practices of discontinuing the vintage of F-16 jets located at Burlington International Airport as the no-action alternative or a reasonable alternative under NEPA. There are obligations to address different alternatives, and their allegation is that one alternative, which is, which is discontinuance of F-16s, was not given consideration.
Do you understand the rationale why Winuski did not join on these counts?
No, sir, I wasn't participating in one of those. I'm not counsel to the city of Winuski. I'm counsel to you.
Let's let him finish.
Count six, failure to consider low-probability catastrophic impact of exposure to the public to extraordinarily toxic particulates and fumes of burning carbon fiber and stealth coatings under NEPA. This is one of the safety counts. Count seven, adoption of the mitigation report without notice to the public is required under NEPA. There was a mitigation document that was produced, failure to give the public notice that that was going to be considered. Violation of the National Historic Preservation Act is another count. Count nine, which I believe that was one that I dropped. Count nine, plaintiffs identified or reasonably perceive a risk of severe harm which had not been disclosed in the EIS, final EIS, which defendant staff corroborated, but defendant executed. Record of decision without supplementing the EIS and without directing that it follow-up mitigation plan addressed the risk in violation of NEPA and the Administrative Procedures Act. Count 10, the record of decision relied upon, considers not, excuse me, the record of decision relied upon considerations not disclosed in the draft of final EIS. Each one of these ten counts has a similar, what we would call prayer for relief or request, issuing a declaratory judgment that the airport has violated the National Environmental Policy Act NEPA. Requesting the court issue a declaratory judgment declaring that the defendant violated NEPA by failing to conduct a, for example, objective good-fait disclosure and evaluation of the no-action. That was declared in that, that count. Request that the court issue a mandatory injunction requiring the defendant to comply with NEPA. Issue an injunction prohibiting the defendant from operating F-35 jets at the Burlington International Airport until a supplemental EIS is produced. More documentation, more consideration. And allow the plaintiffs to recover costs of the action under 28 BSA 4212. Essentially, if the federal government wasn't substantially justified in maybe in undertaking its action, plaintiffs can sometimes allow to recover their attorney's fees and costs in litigation.
So could he order the judge not to be based at the Burlington International Airport?
That's a great question. I don't think so.
Thank you. And is there, is it accurate to say that the interests represented by what the counts have just been read as are public in nature?
Yes.
Rather than personal and individual?
They are public in nature, and as they're available to the public, anyone who wants to go down and read them are, can go down and read them. Now, did they represent the public's interest? I don't, I don't believe so, in that the public is not a party to the suit. There are individual plaintiffs and a group.
The original count calls for relief to just the members of the South F-35 Coalition with affected properties. So there is private potential financial benefit to those points.
Okay. I think we probably get a, get a different reading of that.
Yes.
So, Tom, the comment, I mean, just for clarification, if there was financial remuneration to be given, it could be to anyone that would fall within that area? So I'm within the 65 DNO?
It actually restricts the judges that are part of the...
No, it doesn't.
No.
All right.
Recovery costs to the plaintiffs of the suit, not to the public.
Okay. Oh, fine.
And property devaluations for those members?
No, 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 no.
Wasn't part of the relief?
Just legality.
I'll show you.
It's just legality.
I can go. I can show you.
Well, I think we're going to hear from...
We'll ask for Mr. Dumont.
I think we have that.
I'd also like to invite Mr. Roy also to...
Yes, Roy as well. So are there any other questions for Mr. Barlow? Thank you. I'm sorry, there are next. Thank you. I'm sorry for the unfortunate choice of words by Councilwoman Lee. Each of you really think about and remember her tone, please. I'd like to call up, um, Jim Dumont.
May we also please?
Yes, please.
Make a motion that we call up Chris Roy, who is also part of this lawsuit that he intends to get conjoined to.
I think we have another person that's had...
Oh, we have another person, but it would be inappropriate to do it. And, you know, he's from Vickersfield. I would like to have him up since he is an expert in hazmat and, but I would... expert in hazmat and, but I would like to have, if anyone wanted to have one attorney here, I would like to have Mr. Roy here as well.
We should just have him. But we're going to hear from Mr. Dumont and then the other individual, and if there seems to be time, we can hear from...
No, I don't think that's the way it should be.
I said, then we can hear from Mr. Roy.
I thought you said if there was tone.
Mr. Dumont.
Are we here to talk about the library?
Well, you want to make a contribution?
I'd rather be talking about the library. I'm sure my friend, Mr. Roy, who's here, will agree with me, Mr. Jim, that under the statutes that are involved in this case, it is impossible to award anybody any money damages. So I invite you to ask Mr. Roy that question when he comes up. The basic paradigm that this lawsuit is based on is the democratic principle that the government will make better decisions once the public is given full disclosure or adequate disclosure of the environmental impacts of a project, of reasonable alternatives to the project, and of ways to mitigate the impacts of the project. That's what NEPA calls for, disclosure of the impacts, alternatives, and mitigation. The judge's role is not to decide for the Air Force what to do. The judge's role is not to say, whatever the case is, the government can do this or can't do that. The judge's role is to decide whether or not NEPA has been complied with. If it has not been, the judge has the authority to issue an injunction, saying you can't go forward with whatever that decision is until you fix the problem. In this case, we're saying, issue a supplemental EIS. Unless the Air Force issues a supplemental EIS, then they would not be allowed to go forward with the basing decision. So the judge doesn't say yes or no to basing, what the judge says is yes or no to whether the environments of disclosure to allow an informed public discussion, informed discussion within various levels of government, has occurred. If it hasn't occurred, everything stops until it occurs.
If you were a coalition to stop the F-35, would there be another avenue for you to pursue to prevent the basing of the F-35 at the Burlington International Airport, other than challenging this NEPA?
I'm not quite sure if I follow your question.
Is there any other way that people that feel aggrieved could challenge the basing of the F-35, other than contesting the NEPA decision by the Air Force?
You mean other ways in the court?
I don't appreciate the condescending tone.
Tom, your commenting is, is challengeable.
I apologize if you think I'm condescending.
He's trying to take his deep breath and...
Trying to understand the question.
Ask for your exception.
Do you want me to answer? Because you just asked for an executive session, I don't want to get in the way of that.
That's going to be the same.
No, I can't think of any other avenues right now. The way the federal statutes are designed, including the Administrative Procedure Act, these are decisions that are left to the government to make. NEPA was adopted to put some democratic process into the government process that will acquire environmental full disclosure, and if it doesn't happen, the judge is saying, start over. And that's what we're trying to do.
This is the only avenue, is what I just heard you say?
The only avenue, court avenue, yes.
If they're not to stop the basing...
This is the only avenue to prevent or delay the basing?
Yes.
The judge's role is to decide has the environmental disclosure been adequate? If the judge says it has been, then the basing goes forward. If the judge says it hasn't been, the judge has the authority to say, stop, and nothing more happens until you fix the disclosure problem.
Which takes a long...
It's up to the Air Force to decide. It depends on the nature of the findings made by the judge. If the judge finds there's been a limited problem, it would take a limited amount of time for the Air Force to correct it. If the judge finds there's a larger problem, it'd probably take a longer time.
Is it also true that how the findings come out, the judge cannot force the Air Force to do something, I mean, other than saying the EIS was inappropriate, or they have to have another one? They can't force the information that we are looking to receive in South Burlington?
That's correct. It's not a FOIA case, or information that case is. It's a NEPA case. So the judge can only say, if you want to go forward with whatever this action is. It could be, you know, in this case, it's basing. It could be any other thing that's a major federal action. If you want to go forward with it, first you have to fix the NEPA problem. And it's up to you, in this government agency, to decide whether or not to do that. But if you're going to go forward with the substantive decision, first you have to fix the information shortage. Then you remake the decision. As I say, it's based on the democratic ideal that if we get enough information out to the public, and to some town governments, city governments, state governments, and give everybody a chance to be heard, we'll get a better decision.
Which is what we want to do with this issue, to get the public, and they have had nine days to react to this motion. So that's something that we'd like to hear the South Burlington as well.
Can you also tell us about, let's see, there was the amicus?
Sure. I agree with everything the city attorney told you. I think you hit the nail on the head. To reiterate what he said, if you're a party, you have rights, including the right to take an appeal, and you're guaranteed the right to have a seat at the table in briefing the appeal and framing the issues. If you're an amicus, you cannot raise issues that have not been raised by others. You can provide a different perspective on the issues that others have raised, that the parties have raised.
And the city of Nuski, through an exhaustive process, identified one count to conjoin to, and they're full litigating there, they're not amicus, they're a full party of one count of intent.
If we were in court, I would object to your question as being a compound question, so I'll try and take it piece by piece.
I'm not a lawyer, Mrs. Nuski.
You're doing better than a lot of lawyers do.
Thank you.
The city of Nuski has expressed serious concerns about this project. If you look at the resolutions passed by the Nuski City Council going back several years, they've raised, the resolutions raised a number of issues that go beyond just count one. And however, the resolutions focus mostly on the noise impacts. And I am not the lawyer, my understanding of their decision-making process was, we are consistent with the resolutions that the city council has been raising over a number of years, and we're intervening to carry out the intent of those earlier resolutions.
Uncapable.
Which largely, it's not entirely, but it's largely count one.
Jim, do you feel that South Burlington weighing in on this adds a lot of weight to Judge Crawford's decision?
I guess I would repeat what I said to the Nuski City Council, which is, we have an excellent federal judiciary. These are all terrific people, all of our federal judges. And when they see that a duly-elected governing body of any town or city wants to be part of the case, I think that prompts them to take the case more seriously.
Within two weeks of oral arguments?
Uh huh.
You know, it's like, you're coming to the party late, you really care? Or what caused this to go through? You know, I have, I have a problem with the processing and the timing. You know, this was not brought up months ago, when people would have had an opportunity to look at this. This understands, this understands that some of us objected the process that has happened.
That's outside my realm. I can't help you with that. But in answer to your earlier question, in my view, if the city were to intervene as a plaintiff, that would be the simple solution, because you don't have to find a different perspective. You would not be asking the city attorney and some outside counsel to find a different perspective on the issues that were already raised. What you would be doing is saying, we are intervening, and we support what the plaintiff said in count one. You could restrict it to count one. You could intervene just to be heard on count one. And you would not be spending a lot of money or time writing a separate brief, because the briefs have been done already.
So in other words, the information is really already been put in?
Briefing has.
The briefing has already been put in. And the last party joining it was in April of 15. And we're looking and seeing if we're bringing nothing new to the table, other than saying, yep, we like those two, we could sign on to those. I can't see why we're joining at the last minute.
And those briefs are written by lawyers representing the city of Nuski. The city of South Burlington has a much larger landmass, a larger population, and much different interests. The airport resides in our city. I cannot see us combining or taking the same positions as the attorneys in briefings of the city of Nuski.
Well, if you look at count two, one of the, count two focuses on the failure of the EIS to take into account the city of South Burlington's comprehensive plan. I wouldn't expect Nuski to weigh in on that. Count two focuses on what you've put in your comprehensive plan. The federal statute says, again, it doesn't give the judge veto power, but the federal statute says to the agency, you need to consider what's in the local plan, and evaluate, and for the public's benefit, and for the benefit of all state, local agencies, and other federal agencies. If we go forward with this, how will that conflict with what the town, or the county, whatever, has already said, we want for our own future? And until that happens, you can't have, at least I would say, a lawful decision. In this case, the EIS never mentioned the South Burlington comprehensive plan.
Since it was by plaintiffs.
Our old plan or our new plan?
None of them are in the EIS.
Well, what I'm looking at and saying, we've had a change. So if you're saying it wasn't, it wasn't included, they ignored that, and we've had a change of our comprehensive plan since then.
Well, that gets to a different issue, which is, in general, in federal courts and state courts, we only look at the documents that are in effect at the time the lawsuit is filed.
So they're old.
For lots of reasons. So the judge, and all of us, are briefing, what was, what were the comprehensive plans? What were the zoning that were in effect at the time? Actually, no, I'm sorry to spoke, not the time the lawsuit is filed, the time the EIS was done.
So we're signing on to things that we could even consider be updated.
Well, that's possible. And sometimes the EISs are updated because of the time delay, like in this case, the first draft EIS was updated because it was using old, out-of-date census data.
But the issue was that they did not comment on them, and they legally, through NEPA, were required to.
Yes, and if you look at how the Air Force...
Which is a fundamental question, which you said really is the basis of the lawsuit.
Yes, and if you, for example, how they compare, how the EIS studied conflict with the plans in other, for other bases, they actually looked at the zoning, and they look at the comprehensive plans for the other locations. But when it came to the BIA, it was as if there was no zoning, or there's no planning, because it's not mentioned in the EIS. And the EIS is the document that's supposed to serve as the basis for the public's discussion, your discussion, Senator Lakey's discussion, the legislature, everybody has a chance to weigh in. But it's supposed to be weighing in on the basis of what's, we're reading in the EIS that it didn't have.
Can you, if there's no more questions on the lawsuit, can you go through, and if you think of one after you ask it, in terms of what NEPA requires, and that process for NEPA, can you expand upon that in a way that would be helpful?
Sure.
I mean, we certainly had discussions about process, and from my belief, I think the federal government, or the Air Force, didn't respond to the process that is in law that's required to provide communities such as ours, the information that really does assess accurately and fully, or as adequately as they can, the risks associated. So that never came. And I, and my sense is that with additional information, we might be better able to address those risks for our citizens.
So NEPA is all about process, it's 100% process.
Governed by the rule of reason?
Yes, governed by the rule of reason. The rule of reason, however, you'll see this, and it looks like you've read some of the briefs. The briefs talk about, talk about what does the rule of reason mean as applied? You're welcome to come to oral argument, see how we all deal with that. Go ahead. So the process is supposed to start with a determination by the agency that there's a major federal action that significantly affects the quality of the environment. Obviously, that's true here. And then the government goes through a scoping process, meeting with various actors within the federal government and outside the federal government to determine the scope of the EIS. That happened here. And then there's a draft EIS. The draft EIS is sent out, circulated for public comment. And then there's a final EIS. And the final EIS, by law, is supposed to respond to the comments that the public has submitted. If the comments raise important issues that were not addressed in the draft EIS, the government is supposed to issue a revised or supplemental EIS, or at least in the response to the comments, provide a reasonable basis for going forward without doing a draft or supplemental EIS. So getting back to the example first of noise mitigation. In this case, a number of my clients and I raised the issue of noise mitigation, and said, if we're going to go forward, we need to know what the cost will be of soundproofing affected homes. How is it done? How much will it cost? We know that at other airports around the country, it's done. So is this not eye in the sky? It's not speculation. So don't the people of this community need to know? Don't they deserve to know what it's going to cost to soundproof homes? Whether it's costing the city, or city of Nuski, or it's going to cost the state, or it's going to cost private landlords? Let's find out.
I'm under the impression that's currently being explored through the Synapse Committee in conversations directly with the airport. I don't see why we have to sue the federal government to answer that question.
I think we go back to talking about the process for NEPA, and what is required by law for them to respond to. I think we have taken that stance, but we did not get our questions answered.
And that's a great point. Why not just use a local process? And the answer is, as the U.S. Supreme Court has told us in one of its decisions, because it's that process of looking at the cost of mitigation, and how mitigation would work, and would, how well would it work, that is supposed to be part of the decision-making process that the federal government makes. The federal government is not supposed to make its final decision until it knows the answers to those questions and has heard from the public about those questions.
I read the documents, and on multiple occasions, I have every evidence, every reason to believe that the Air Force has been forthright and forthcoming, and their response is methodical and systematic. I'm coming to the conclusions, just, I'm not saying necessarily what everybody wants to hear.
Well, then you're reading a document that the Air Force's lawyers have read either, because in their briefs, they haven't identified anywhere in the EIS where the effectiveness or cost of noise-proofing homes or schools is addressed. So you're looking at a different document than the judge is looking at.
And we're exploring that through the...
Why would, no, I'm on the Air Force mission. Why would the airport be moving ahead then with grant-writing opportunities through the FAA? And we've been classified as the number-one priority for the FAA, for the whole Northeast zone, East Coast zone, whatever. And if the monies are coming through the government by the FAA, just as the monies did for the voluntary sale of the properties there, then why is this not sufficient?
Well, again, it gets back to what is, how is the federal statute supposed to work? We can be cynical and say, we don't believe that the federal government does anything right. Or we can be a little bit idealistic and say, let's trust the government to follow the law. And if the decision-makers within the Air Force are willing to follow the law, then the process should include all that information before their decision, not afterwards.
It is interpretation of the law, right, Jim? It is the interpretation of the law.
That's why we have judges.
And lawyers.
Lawyers are a lesson.
Well, in the whole process as well, you filed your case, and then the Air Force has responded, and from those responses, not response, there was additional information that was not included in the draft EIS. So to some extent, they've answered some questions.
I meant questions, they have, yes.
They have shared more information, which I think is telling. If they knew the information, and it was required through NEPA, why wasn't it included in the first round, or the second round?
My understanding is they use the rule of reason, and there's only so many pieces of information that you need to apply, because there's an infinite amount of content in the world that they could keep digging into and provide more and more of. So they exhausted, and I understood...
And I think some of it we can't answer, because we are not, and I understand.
We don't have the data.
I understand, again with that. My question goes a little bit even beyond that. Let's presume for a moment, South Burlington decided to join the lawsuit. As a full party, what say do we have in whether or not an appeal should be filed? Are we going to get 50% of the vote? Or are we going to get one out of four? Or, you know, how are we going to be able to weigh in if, if the lawsuit goes down to defeat, we've spent money, and we are full parties, and then an appeal is going to be decided? Who decides?
That's a great question.
The coalition or us? I mean, and where do we draw the line? And I know we can withdraw any time, but you know, once you've been attached to something... but you know, once you've been attached to something, you're assumed that you support both that.
So that's a great procedural question. The answer is you have 100% of the vote, because each party has the right to appeal, even if nobody else does.
So we could opt out of appealing, even though your group could stay in.
Absolutely. Or if we chose not to go forward, the city of South Burlington could go forward.
Then why are we not handling this ourselves instead of joining your group now?
In a sense, when you intervene as a plaintiff, you are doing that, because I won't be representing the city of South Burlington. Your own lawyer will be representing you.
You don't represent Van Nuske.
I do not. You'll be there, you know, the three driver's seats. And each-
So we will have our own lawyer saying, "We want to accept what's already been filed, and we sign on to that."
Yes, and then the only reason, frankly, that you would have to be in that position now is just because, as you say, it's late in the game. And I don't think anybody wants to start the briefing schedule all over again. But once you're a party, then you're in the driver's seat as to what happens from your perspective. City Van Nuske could say, "We don't want to appeal." My clients could say, "We don't want to appeal." And then there might be something about the judge's decision that particularly affects South Burlington. And if you're not a party, you might be able to appeal.
Or we could just stay out and wait for the decision, then file as a front of the court secondarily.
Only if somebody appeals.
If there's an appeal.
If there's an appeal.
If it's lost, will there be an appeal by the Stop the F-35 Coalition? I can't imagine there wouldn't be.
You have to see what the wording of the decision is.
Any other comments on the process?
I think we've covered a lot.
All right. Any other questions in terms of what's in the lawsuit?
You're saying that there is some clauses calling for the reimbursement or financial benefit to members of the Stop the F-35 Coalition with properties that are in the affected 65 DML zone.
Do you have the complaint in front of you?
I do.
It's not in there. I wrote it. And if I wrote it, if I asked for that, it would have been a violation of my ethics as lawyer, because you can't get that in this kind of suit.
So you can ask for relief as the court means necessary?
That, but there are only two statutes that allow this, that are at play here. The Administrative Procedure Act, which governs how the government makes decisions, and NIPA. And neither of them allows damages to affected landlords in this kind of suit. It's just, it's a different world. What you may be getting at is, there's a whole other area of law, common law. And Justice Morse, in his separate and concurring opinion in the Act of 50 case, he wrote separately to say, "If this goes forward, I certainly hope the affected homeowners will explore their common law rights to sue for damages." So that's, you're right, that has been in discussion. Justice Morse raised that in his concurring opinion in the Supreme Court case. As Justice Morse wrote, "The impacts on affected homeowners will be just devastating. And I hope these people explore their rights under the common law to see damages." But that's not what this lawsuit is.
Jim, how are the funds determined for the Stop the F-35 Coalition? My understanding is most of those funds, or all of the funds, are funneled through the Peace and Justice Coalition. Is that right?
I often represent citizens groups that find a nonprofit to donate to, and then the nonprofit pays.
Then the nonprofit pays it. How do any of us find out? I mean, you know, people can find out who gives more than $100 to a campaign. How do we find out who contributes to this?
I don't know. I'm not, I would have to research that. And to be absolutely frank, I'm not sure. I've never answered the question. I've never been asked the question before. So I don't know if there's a privacy interest at stake that would preclude a lawyer from revealing that. I don't know the answer.
Then to find out how much money the Stop the F-35 Coalition has? No one knows that, except the Peace and Justice Coalition?
Well, in general, nonprofits file Form 990s. And those are public information. But if you went to a nonprofit and said, "I want to know more details," that's more than not disclosed in a Form 990, I am not sure any lawyer would advise a nonprofit to open that door. I'm not a nonprofit expert. I don't know the law on that. But it's a question, and I don't know the answer.
Well, somebody's writing checks to pay for services, so I was just curious. The Peace and Justice Coalition?
Among others, yeah.
Among others. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we have, I'm sorry, the gentleman has-
Mr. Cosgrove?
Yes.
I'd like to have Chris as well. But Mr. Cosgrove is from Bakersfield. Would you, would you please come forward? Todd Cosgrove has got a resume that's this long, and I don't want to go through that. But I have to tell you why I reached out to him. I sat here last week, and I heard many of the concerns that you had about safety. There were things I didn't understand about certain, you know, how are fires put out? If there's a crash, composites, what have you, and so forth. And I wanted to find out. And I said, "You know what? There was nobody in the room that was an expert on it, certainly not in the council issue." And I thought, "If I could bring in someone that is a, what I would say, neutral, because you don't take the side of the guard or the city in this." Mr. Cosgrove, could you just explain what your position is with the state hazmat program? And how, if any, ways that you have to deal with the guard as far as reviewing process procedures or whatever, or for the entire Burlington airport?
Basically, I'm chief of the state hazmat team. I'm also the tier-two program manager with the community right-to-know program for the state of Vermont as well. So in my daily interactions as chief of the hazmat team, I interact quite commonly with all fire departments throughout the state, all 250 departments.
Okay. And when I reached out to you, I had no clue, really, how hazmat functioned with the other communities. And you explained to me that it was more of a mutual benefit piece that was supplemental, that came in to help the local fire departments, along with the, what would be the air guard fire team. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that the air guard fire team, actually, 25 of the 29 are state employees and so forth.
So you are a firefighter or a responder?
I am a, I'm a volunteer fire chief for 22 years. Out of my 44 years as a fire, in the fire service. Started when I was 15, and I've been there since. And I'm also a fire service instructor for the state of Vermont Fire Academy.
Hazmat, I'm sorry. Hazmat deals with hazardous wastes, right?
We're, we're in-
Hazardous accidents and things like that?
Under Title 20 and Chapter 1 on the Emergency Management, Section 33, where we got created in 1995, I worked as an industrial firefighter, career industrial firefighter for a large computer company down the road away, that's in the state. And that's where this kind of came from, is we were the only hazardous materials response team in the state as a industry. And we were starting to get trumped, you know, because of economics. So the state decided they need to come up with a team. They created this team in 1995. And under Title 20, the fire chief is the actual person in charge of all incidents within his or hers community, unless there's a bomb threat or something along that lines or a terrorist event. Then the police, the local police or the state, whoever's jurisdiction, would be in charge of the event. We are an organization that comes in as a, I'll call it a mutual aid group, and assist those agencies when it's beyond their local scope. So that's kind of how we get activated. I am the only full-timer. I have 26 part-time employees that work for me. Those 26 part-time employees are retired state troopers, arson investigators, they are agency and natural resources personnel, environmental conservation personnel, they are firefighters, they are EMTs, paramedics. So it's a very diverse group.
And you are an EMT as well.
And I'm an EMT as well.
And you have credentials. You've been certified, and it could go that long.
I'm a certified fire inspector, certified hospital surveyor.
Something 100, 200, 300, 800, or whatever. And all of those cover very serious circumstances that can happen regarding hazmat materials.
That's correct.
The question that I asked you, and it was because of all of the questions that had come up. What if there is a mishap at the airport? And I wanted to know what would happen specifically if one of the planes, current F-16, proposed F-35, one of these crashed? What would happen? What would be the process of what would happen? And how is the guard trained? And before you answer this, can I ask one question? Do you feel that our local, and you know our chief here, and what we have, and you know the chief at the fire department at the guard, and how they are prepared? Do you feel that they have adequate training? That they have adequate materials that they have? Are there any special equipment that they are required to have at the airfield in order to protect us, not only if one of the military planes crashed, but a civilian or a commercial carrier? So I asked a lot, but let's start with their equipment and all.
It's based on my experience, having worked with the civilian and military folks, because that's one thing that's misconstrued sometimes, is the airport firefighters are state employees, but they're also military people on the weekend. I believe there's three people that are dual status, or they're particularly just military. They are very well-equipped. I would put them up front with any other agency that protects airports throughout any other states. They have just received two new additional pieces of apparatus, which are fast response.
And those are?
Those, I can't remember the terminology.
No, but they are here.
But they're like a 450 or 550 chassis. So they're very small. They can go anywhere within the state. They're meant for rapid deployment. The current aircraft coming in and out of the airport at this time are made of composite material. Those, that one truck can cover one of those large commercial airliners with the foam that is onboard and the water that they add.
And how, how long would it take with foam to put it out? Is this hours and days and?
It's going to depend, but it should be able to be knocked down pretty quickly. And that's along with any fire departments in the state. We train firefighters to the firefighter-one and firefighter-two levels. In the firefighter-two levels, they're trained about foam, and they're trained to use foam. And we train as a fire service to respond to unknowns all the time. That's something we train for the everyday house fire. We train for the everyday car accident. But there's all of those other incidents that are out there. And that's the idea with mutual aid, and that's the idea with state resources, is to be able to cover those instances where the local community doesn't have that resource.
So the local people take care of it first?
Absolutely.
And then you kind of do the cleanup part and come in for the second?
The state comes in as a mutual aid resource. Those local communities, once they've exhausted local mutual aid in their own local department.
We heard our fire chief on April 18th that it could take between two and four hours for the mutual aid people to arrive, the hazmat team to arrive?
I can have people on scene within 15 minutes. If you're talking a team to enter a scene, yeah. It depends on where it is. I've had teams leave from here and go down to the Bennington area. We were dressed out in suits and going downrange within two hours. So it depends. But my people are scattered throughout the state. They're just in Chippina County. I have them deployed throughout the state. I also have deployed throughout the state 17 decon trailers. Those decon trailers are placed strategically around the hospitals in the area for the event of a mass casualty, so they do have those decon capabilities, one of which is here in South Burlington at the fire station.
So have you been briefed on the new composites, the additional composites that are part of the F-35?
I have seen the documentation, yes.
So have you been trained?
We deal with composites on Volkswagens. We deal with composites on gas tanks now, LNG, gas tanks, natural gas, are using composite. Composite's not a new material. It's a material that's been out there. I dealt with it in industry and some of the storage facilities that we have. It's just they've improved some of those.
They actually have some new composites that are top-tier, right?
Composite's a composite. I can't talk in regards to what it is.
Composite isn't just a composite. There's different levels and names.
It's like metal. There's different ways we make metal. There's different ways we make composites. There's different ways we make computer chips. Each one has their own unique-
So there could be a difference in the composite. But the process by way of putting this out, if an F-35, you know, and let's be, let's be nice. We do have an expert here, someone who is trained in this.
What I can tell you is this, when a plane goes down, your biggest fire you're going to be dealing with is the fuel. Fuel is what we deal with on a regular basis as a firefighter. So the foam is actually attacking the fuel fire. It's not attacking the composite. That's a misnomer. The fuel is what you're using, because that's where your fire is going to be. Once you extinguish the fuel, then the composite itself should be out. The only time you can get the composites, you've got a catastrophic.
And when I asked you how long this would take?
Foam is still flying. And once that goes out, then that's, we would commit, I wouldn't be involved necessarily in the firefighting aspect of it. I'm going to be coming in to assist, the cleanup afterwards, the decon of the patients, air monitoring. We have, we have equipment that I can place up to a mile away to do air monitoring, to make sure nothing's going beyond, if you will, the airport itself.
Who does the firefighting?
The state, the airport firefighters. That's what they're trained in. And then there's another group out of Ruppam that's trained as well. But if it went off airbase, your local department's going to be the first one there. They've been trained to extinguish a fire. I'm not going to tell you they've been trained, or I should say, trained to extract the pilot from the plane. from the plane. That's a whole different thing. That's specific training that the air guard has because of the military component, because of the secrecy of the top secrets.
Do you know if the air guard, and I don't believe this is the case, but just correct me if I'm wrong, do they have self-contained breathing apparatus, chemical protected clothing, leather gloves, and neoprene overalls?
Absolutely. Their technician level training, the same as my team.
They call that bunker gear, right?
Yes. And technician level training means they can plug and patch, they can glue into the product. Most fire departments throughout the state are trained to the operations level, which means they can damn-dite and divert the product, keep it from going somewhere. They can also have been trained to be able to decon a person home. So that's what augments us. When we put that decon trailer rules in, that local fire department's got people that are trained to assist us with that decon as well.
So you're saying our fire team also has that?
They all have that. Absolutely, they have to. And that's the thing, firefighting is firefighting. You still, everybody wears that, everybody wears the fire protector here, the poker gear, if you want to call it that. The nomex who is, you wouldn't be able to fight fire if you didn't have that equipment. This, this department over here is one of the premier departments, and I would say most departments throughout the state of Vermont were very lucky for a state that's all volunteer. You only have 20, what they would call full-time departments. The only career department to my knowledge is South Burlington, Burlington. The rest are what they call combination departments, which means you have one, maybe full-time firefighter, and the rest are volunteers from the community. We do very well in this state with volunteers, where other states are paying very high community rates to put full-time firefighters in place. I'm very proud of what we do and what we train firefighters to do in this state.
Todd, the other question that I asked you, because it was specifically related to one of the military jets, and they are considerably smaller, I understand, than, you know, the commercial carriers. But I asked you a question, and I was really taken back by your answer, and I wanted to know, how long did you feel if there was a crash and that rapid responder vehicle was there? And I have a piece on the table back there from Colonel Gani, who's the head of the Flight Command, in talking about the area that they automatically cover is 15 miles, but we'll go beyond that, you know, with the request. Once they are right there, how long would it take to put that out?
Wouldn't take long at all.
I mean, you mentioned to me.
Within, within probably five to 10 minutes. It doesn't take.
Five to 10 minutes.
And when you started, and again, if each, I can say that it's not going to cover every situation, but most situations would be handled that way. Again, you're knocking down the fuel. The fuel is what's causing the fire. And that's where your biggest hazard is, when you have an airplane with fire, is the fuel.
Have you ever fought a fire, or been given information about fire where you have 42% of the body being composited?
I can't answer that, because I'd be, I wrote, I did a disclosure with my previous employer that would not want me to answer that question, but you can take what you want from that inference.
Yeah, we did receive this as an aspect of the case for the reports now, in the kind of the briefings filed by the Air Force, they did include in disclose a report, it was on the hazardous risks involved with specifically military, because that's really what we're talking about. Military planes that are different than commercial. I understand that there's a whole variety, a host of cars and trucks and commercial flights that have some composite. I also understand that there's lots of different kinds of composite, and one composite is very different from another. But in that document, they really did talk about instances where other, and these were crash statistics and information, about not the F-35s, but other, I think the F-22 and other military planes that, that have a great number of these composites, and the way they burn, you're right, the fuel is what explodes first, and it gets to, I don't know, like 1,700 degrees or some enormous thing, and you use the foam and you put that out. But this document talked about the different layers of composite, and that they, once the gas, or the fuel is, gasoline, whatever it is, the fuel is put out, then the next layer of composite burns, and when that's put out with another, probably a different kind of foam, or maybe the same, I don't know, but it's layer after layer. So the actual burning and the gases and particles that get emitted into the atmosphere is a little longer than a two to four hour burn.
I don't, without having read the document, I can't really comment on it.
But this is the kind of information it seems to be.
I'll give you the example I would use. In your homes that were built, when I first started firefighting, we call them legacy homes. Those homes were built to wood. Those homes, you got 18 minutes to escape from a house. Your modern homes today, you have two and a half minutes. And the reason is, they have composites. They have all those things, and the biggest hazard today is cyanide. But it hasn't changed the fact that we still fight fires and we still win those fires.
Oh, I appreciate.
And I'm just saying that I think it's hard for me to speak to that particular one, because I have not seen that report to comment on it.
Well, I'm just kind of trying to understand that while I believe that you do your work very well, and I believe that our fire department does as well.
They do very well.
One of the concerns I have is around the differences that no one seems to be, have experience with here in terms of.
Your air guard fire department has lots of experience with that. They're being, I shouldn't say, one of the military folks to slap me if I say this wrong, but they are being trained. They're being sent out and they're getting training, and once there's a new plane comes in, they will be trained to fight fires. That's part of their requirement.
Oh, I don't doubt that. It's just knowing that the risk to this community as a, as a result of fires, that you don't have experience fighting, they presumably will, and just knowing what that is for our community. Are there risks that we should know about? And that, in essence, I think is what the lawsuit is about.
I guess my point is, is it's no higher risk than you have today in fires that you have in your homes, your apartment buildings, when those are burning. You have those same cyanide, you have a lot of the same gases being emitted, and that's what we take precautions as from, to help potentially keep people from being exposed to as firefighters and hazmat technicians.
Todd, if there was a crash, and if there were composite materials that burned longer under the foam or what have you, wouldn't the air quality testing tell us that, that there is particles or whatever being emitted? And that would be able to be monitored and maybe, no, I don't know whether they put one layer of foam on or two or whatever, but I'm sure, I'm sure people don't believe that until they're sure that everything is okay.
I would have to refer that the agency and natural resources, the Department of Energy Conservation, they would be able to answer that. They would have the air monitoring after, or ground monitoring after incidents throughout the state.
But I think, Todd, my point is, we don't know what those particles and whatever's going into the air will be, because for one, the stealth coating, no one knows what it's made of. I mean, the Air Force knows, but the public don't. And I, and I don't expect them to tell us that, but I do expect that as a community that's going to house F-35s with a much higher crash rate, at least in the beginning, as they learn to get the experience in flying them, that there's a certain amount of information that needs to be shared. And the, an example is that more has been shared because there's a court case, not because they want to be good guys and share information with the communities, our communities, about the risks involved and how we can prepare. We don't have an evacuation plan in this community, and I think we should have.
And that's another, that's another question I have.
Well, that would be a question I would ask Kevin.
I asked Kevin, and he said we don't have one.
Every community in the state of Vermont has a incident plan. We're dealing with all hazards.
Emergency management.
Emergency management is requiring that, yeah.
Well, I'm getting trained on that tomorrow, but the public sure as heck doesn't know. Do you know what would happen if, I mean, how would you even know that you should evacuate your home or your business?
Well, you know, Helen, I probably live close enough to the airport, I might hear the crash. Let me put this aside, I'm not trying to be smart with this. I'm not trying to be smart with this. What I'm saying is, yes, there are certain, there are certain times, if a hurricane is coming or whatever, we have, you know, that type. This is something that happens like this, okay? And you're saying we don't know what the evacuation is? From where and for how? I trust that we have a city that is staffed to do that, and a state that is staffed to put that in. It's not up to the Air Force to tell us how to have an evacuation plan.
I would also submit that it's thanks to these court briefs.
Nor is it up to them to tell us the composites within this, any more than General Motors would tell us, all the materials that are in their cars.
Well, it's also thanks to these court briefs that I've learned what a national defense area is. Have you ever worked with a national defense area after a crash?
No, no. Being a retired military person, I know that when a military aircraft goes down, that is military property. Fire might get put out, but no one else is going to enter the crash scene until the proper authorities are there to take over, and then the state police would be the ones that would coordinate until that appropriate authority came.
And on Friday, I attended a webinar, and it talked about there being 10 miles leeway from one end to the other end. We certainly don't have that at our airport. So we're talking about a crash at St. Quatron landing, it could very well happen outside of the airport property in our city, and so it could very well occur in a business area like our business park, it could occur in residential area, just southeast of the airport, we have a residential area. And what I've learned from these, from these briefs is that the national defense area would require people to leave or face imprisonment. And I think, I think we need to know that.
That's part of your local emergency response plan. It's part of the community right to know program. This, this city organization is supposed to have an incident response plan, and that plan is supposed to complement the county plan, and the county plan is supposed to complement the state plan, and the state plan complements the federal plan. So that's how those all tie in together, and that should be reviewed on, and if there's that particular piece of it, that should be part of that local community plan. How do we get notified? Who's going to notify us? And where's our, where do you evacuate to? Because you're responsible as a community to provide that evacuation spot, not the federal government. So there's a whole myriad of things, and that's how we operate. We operate under your local emergency response plan, but I commit as an hazmat.
We're potentially looking at hundreds to thousands of people to evacuate, and, and from also the records we have had access to, thanks again to this lawsuit, there have been planes with high composites that have burned between two to three days. So we're talking about not just a few hours to evacuate, we're talking, you know, fairly lengthy evacuation. That doesn't even say how long those people weren't, you know, that the national defense area was declared a national defense area.
There's a few issues that have happened in the past, and you've had commercial airliners that have done the same thing, where you've had the same things. Anytime you have a major activity, whether it's plane crash, whether it's a chemical incident, whether it's a terrorist event, there's always those large evacuations, and there's always going to be those days that people are put out of place, but at least at least to come back to. And that's the goal of every responder, is to give you that place to come back to.
I understand, Kevin, you recently met this past Friday with the Air National Guard fire readiness. Would you assess their willingness to work with us on our preparedness in both the emergency evacuation plans, as well as any other contingencies or concerns that might come when the F-35s finally come in?
Well, I don't think it's F-35 specific. We train now. There's a regular and constant communication back and forth between our fire department and the air guard staff. And she's right, we have an A320 and an A319 are more than half composite. These are large commercial airliners that have more than half of their, of their construction is composite material. So we have this issue today. That's why we equip, that's why we train. She's right, if there's an incident in South Burlington, Chief Brent is in the lead with the, with the air guard fire team arriving right away to provide their expertise and support. It would largely take direct support or direct control of that incident because of the equipment they have and the training. They train the same way our guys train, firefighter one, firefighter two, but they spend an enormous amount of time training on airplane-specific incidents. How do you get a pilot out? How do you get passengers out? Those sorts of things. So that training is ongoing. Our guys coordinate with them. Some, a couple of our guys are, are members of the team over there in the past several years. But, but, you know, we have this obligation today, as a city management, to train in a composite world. And it's not just at the airport, the FedEx truck has composites on it and so on. So it's, it's a real-world thing for us. As it relates to evacuation, it depends on the incident, depends on a lot of environmental factors. What ways the air wind blowing, how cool it is, things like that. And so every incident would be different, but that's why we train. We're going to train tomorrow. We have a day and a half training in front of us that involves all city management. So, you know, that's, that's what, that's our obligation as city management.
I would, I would just like to follow up, because I had a wonderful conversation with General, I think he's a general, he used to be a Colonel, Joel Clark, Joel. And one of the questions I asked, frankly, was a concern you had, a statement that you made, really about if we join this lawsuit, the, the National Guard will no longer communicate with, with South Burlington. And I asked him specifically, is that really what would happen? And do you continue to communicate with Winuski right now? And he said, quote, "We would never stop communication with communities." They work with Winuski, they certainly don't talk about the lawsuit, but they work with Winuski and they will, would work with South Burlington. So I just want to clear up that communication statement.
I understand there's a current muzzle order that they can't talk about the EIS, and yes, the firefighters continue to work with them, but I do not believe that the Air Force will engage with us on topics of first responder readiness and city council board coming before us to talk about these issues.
Vermont Air National Guard, not the Air Force. And they are separate from the Air Force. They get their, I guess, marching orders, at least the Air Force part of it does.
I remember months ago.
There's a fair amount of, well, I'm just telling you, I asked the, the, he said, "Well, you know, some guardsmen may feel, make those statements, but the brats there will always communicate with communities." So it doesn't make, so I just wanted to put that out there, that that was a statement that said, we, you know, they were going to clam up, and he assured me that they would not.
I would love to have him come before us and talk about this very matter, so we could all have the benefit of the conversation you had. I have a concern.
Let's put the piece out here that I thought was good. There's 100 copies on the back of the room, and it is from the Department of the Air Force, on the top, 158 fighter wing, and this is Lieutenant, I'm sorry, Colonel Patrick Gani. And the question that I asked of him, if I might, was, "As the commander of the 158 fighter wing, are you confident that VTang Fire and Crash Rescue has the required equipment and training to adequately respond to a potential F-35 mishap in the future, specifically due to the increased amount of composite material used on the F-35?" And his answer is, "Without a doubt. Your VTang Fire Department has the training personnel, protective equipment, PPE, and the most recent technology in aircraft fighting equipment to respond to any," the emphasis is his, "type of aircraft mishap, civilian or military, at the Burlington International Airport. This includes civilian, military constructed with aviation-grade composite materials, and our team spent two hours this past Friday with Kevin, talking, and with Chief Brent, providing them details on firefighting and emergency response capabilities. I think it was a very productive meeting. I'd encourage you and the rest of your staff to touch base with them should you need any information."
Was it military and aviation composite?
He said, "Aircraft constructed with aviation-grade composite materials."
So aviation-grade composite materials, I understand, is different than military.
Well, you know what, we could, we could turn around and ask him if that's it. He said.
So I've got similar statements from Joel, so I mean.
Well, I know, but this is the wing commander, and I don't take anything back. Joel is higher than he is, but Pat Gani also came before us that evening, and I think answered a little more detail. The second question was, "If so, would you be willing to allow," because I wanted this, the VTang, to be able to work with us specifically. "Would you be willing to allow VTang firefighters to work with the South Burlington Fire Department and to develop some mutual aid agreements to ensure the residents get the best possible emergency response?" "Absolutely." Exclamation point. "The coordination and mutual aid agreements between VTang and South Burlington has already been established and is in place for years. Both departments already are included in part of the emergency, the Burlington Airport's emergency plan for any type of aircraft incident included at the airport and so forth." They are, the emergency airport is maintained by the Director of Aviation, Mr. Gene Richards, so that answers one more question we had. And both VTang and South Burlington Fire Departments have a copy of the plan. Additionally, in the unlikely event of either a civilian, general aviation, commercial, or military, assigned or transient, aircraft mishap occurring off the airfield, they automatically, they automatically include a 15-mile radius and will go beyond that when the request would come, and I would suspect the request would come from the fire department at the guard and to the local or to you.
The request would go to emergency manag-
Through emergency management, which is through the director.
And just concern confirms what Joel shared with me, the mutual aid, the continued cooperation, which I just am raising.
Well, if I could just finish the last couple, and he said, "Our fire chief..."
I heard differently from him.
I have heard there's a muzzle order.
Our fire chief in yours, but, right, it is specifically, anything, my understanding is that there is a muzzle order that if we called and asked them to give us information on the EIS, then that would be a revoked.
Well, that's understandable, yeah.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. If there are specific concerns that you have that go to the level of support you receive from VTang with respect to firefighting and emergency response, we are more than happy to discuss this and any recommendations to improve our capability to protect the lives of your constituents. I want to be clear, the 158 fighter wing is part of your community, part of our community, and we will continue to serve our nation, our state, and Vermont and the surrounding communities to the very best of our ability. I hope you're as proud of your VTang as we are proud to be members of your community. Please feel free to call me if you left his phone number. And, and that is from the head, I mean, he is probably, what, third in line at the base?
Right. I mean, just clarifying, that is actually, there isn't a muzzle on that, and I think that's important.
No.
And the, yes.
One other thing you need to understand, too, is they work very closely with every fire department in Chittany County, because based on the phase of alert, and that's based on number of souls onboard, so you have one through five, five is we're all coming, that's everybody in the county getting dispatched to that airport because it's a major catastrophe that could potentially happen. And we used to come from that other employer that I worked for and respond over to the air guard and receive training from the air guard to assist them with those large, so every one of those Chittany County departments that's on that phased alert is getting training from the air guard to respond to those incidents, whether they're military or they're civilian aircraft, it doesn't matter, it's souls onboard.
And the reason, the reason I asked Todd to come in was not to prove anyone wrong, but to answer questions for us that none of us have.
And I appreciate that. I got the same, similar information from Joel in part, and I think that's very helpful. Are there any more questions for Mr. Cosgrove?
No.
I just wanted to say that I grew up in a tornado heavy place, and if there was ever a tornado, we had a siren, and everybody knew what that meant. And I also want to report that asking the school bar members about the emergency plan, they have for fire, they have for shooter, but they do not have for an aircraft crash. And I think it's high time for us to think about that in this community.
I'm not sure of that. I know there's a sound that goes off, so aircraft knows not to take off if there's lightning within a certain, and it's very loud, I don't know if you've ever experienced it, but it's a very loud sound that- it, but it's a very loud sound that warns everyone on the ground, "Clear the area, we're expecting lightning to strike."
Right, but I think there's also, it's important for us to get out to the schools and get out to the citizens.
That's a question you should, your planner.
If I learned anything, I mean, if I could... General Clark said, you know, just with the aviation flies at the airport now, he thought we should really, I should demand that we have an evacuation plan in place and that we have, have those conversations and put out a wage on the public. So, that certainly is something that we can...
I think that's citywide.
Absolutely, Pat, I'm just saying, that's one thing I want, right?
And I would offer assistance to get with the Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management and actually ask them to assist you with that. So, they have a reverse side, and they have 2-1-1, they have other things that they probably would that process.
Thank you for coming and reassuring us of the safety proceedings that have been placed.
Mr. Roy.
Thank you.
Is that box an indication of how long you're gonna speak?
No, quite the contrary. That box is why you might want to evaluate whether it's a good idea to get involved in this lawsuit. My name's Chris Roy, and I'm actually here wearing a few different hats. I represent Amicus Curiae, which we've, is friend of the court, is for the Latin scholars.
On his behalf?
Represent that?
We represent GBIC. So, I represent, I represented GBIC both in the Act 250 litigation and also represent them as an amicus in the pending NEPA litigation. I also come before you as somebody who served for eight years on the Wilson Select Board up to last March. So, I was on the Select Board, and I empathize with you folks dealing with a issue that people feel very strongly about and which is not unanimous views, do not hold sway in your community, and we work through those, so I have some sense of that perspective. Just heard some discussion about all hazards mitigation plans and the like. I'm also Vice Chair of Regional Planning Commission, and we work on the county level, coordinating all of the all-hazard mitigation plans from various towns. Actually, probably about six years ago, one of the most impressive things I ever saw was a demonstration that the air guard did of a, they did a fake terrorist incident and called us all in to watch it. And it went from, it was a, it was a car accident, and they showed us how a car accident is dealt with. They determined that there were explosives and bomb-making materials in the car, who they called to come in and deal with that. And all of a sudden, the air guard came in with these inflatable tents and lights, and it looked like, you know, the movie ET, where they take over the neighborhood, and it was a really amazing display. I was absolutely dumbfounded, and as a Select Board member, I was glad that we didn't have to pay for that ourselves.
Well, we did.
And...
I think we all paid federal taxes.
Yeah, in some way, in some way. I'm just, yeah, glad I wasn't the property tax bill that was paying for it.
You don't totally disconnect that.
And the last thing is, I live in Wilson, I can look off my rear deck and watch the fire jets going back and forth, and my youngest is 10. A few years ago, there was occasion when they seemed to time it perfectly with his nap time, but, so, I've also lived in close proximity. I'm gonna be real quick. Jim Dumont and I, I've had the unmitigated pleasure of being involved in cases with Jim and various courts and forms over the last several years, and we enjoy each other's company immensely. And I agree on a procedural level with virtually everything he said. As he explained, he and I will disagree on the substance of some of the points as to what the Air Force was required to do and so on, but as far as the procedure goes, I think he gave you an accurate picture. I do think there is an important point to keep in mind, though, and his suit on behalf of his clients is filed in June of 2014. And the way that it's not an appeal, it's actually an independent suit that questions the basis of the environmental impact statement. So, it's not like an appeal where you have 30 days to file an appeal of something, because you're not actually appealing the decision, as people have explained to you, they're challenging the process underlying the ultimate decision. And there's been some reference to the rule of reason. At the end of the day, none of us, the judge or anybody, can tell the Air Force what policy decision to make, but NEPA requires them to do it on the basis of inadequate study, notice, and comment and all of that.
You did a first pat, lady, Kevin.
Well, that's, that's beyond the purview of the courts. I'll leave that to others to address. One important thing to keep in mind, whenever you go into federal court, the first thing the court wants to do is get a schedule established. And early on, back when it was just the Air Force and the plaintiffs involved, they had not one but two schedules. And then Mr. Dumont came in, and you may recall this from the news, he came in, and I believe it was late March of, right after Town Meeting Day in 2015, and asked for yet another extension of the deadline for new parties to be added to the litigation. And that, as you may recall, had to do with some of the dialogue that was going on in Winuski. And both the City of Winuski and GBIC filed motions to get involved in the litigation by the new deadline of April 29. And in fact, as of that date, because, I'll explain what happened thereafter, there was no objection to anybody participating at that point. That was the deadline that the parties had agreed upon, folks knew about it, so the city was able to join as a party, intervene as a party plaintiff by stipulation with everybody agreeing, and nobody objected to GBIC participating as an amicus, which, as you've heard, means we don't have the power to appeal, we don't have the power to file motions on our own initiative. We have the ability, however, to provide our perspective on issues that are raised by others. We then, what ensued thereafter was several months of assembling the administrative record regarding this, because this is a backward-looking procedural lawsuit. It says, "Did the Air Force assemble an adequate record, study it adequately before making this decision?" So, what you look, you look back in time and you assemble what is the quantum of information that they looked at, and you have to reach some agreement on that. And that, I didn't bring those boxes, because I would've needed Dolly to do that. And there were some motions by Mr. Dumont to actually supplement that with new information. The judge issued an order saying, "No, this is a backwards-looking process. We look at what the Air Force actually considered, we're not looking at new information." After that process was done, then in the winter, this last winter, first, one briefing schedule was established so that plaintiffs could move for judgment, the US Air Force could cross-move for judgment, parties would have a chance to weigh in on the other side's motion, and then you could file reply briefs to respond to the oppositions. That, there, as you can imagine, this right here is nothing but the court filings. This here isn't the draft EIS, the final EIS, the record decision, the administrative, this is just the court filings. And that process took place, and late winter, after one effort to come up with a final briefing schedule and a date for hearing for oral argument, that last oral argument date was set for July 5. And as we all know, although it didn't feel like it this last weekend, July 5 isn't that far away. So, it's a practical, now, what I do want to say is, again, if South Burlington had gotten involved like Winuski back last April, there's no question, but that you would've had the right to participate, and I don't think anybody would've objected to that. At this late date, and of all of the attorneys I've dealt with in the state of Vermont, I think Mr. Dumont is the best at identifying every dag-nab issue that you might possibly find in a matter, much to my client's chagrin, because then they have to pay me to respond to all those issues in a number of circumstances. So, this isn't a matter where sometimes parties will intervene when, let's say you've got a plaintiff who doesn't have the resources to really litigate an issue fully or hasn't retained counsel, to really hash out all the important issues. So, another party wants to come in and make sure that they've got the horses to really litigate. That's not the case here. I can assure you that Mr. Dumont has done an incredibly comprehensive job of briefing the issues, that the Air Force and their Assistant US Attorney who's been responding has responded comprehensively. Every issue that you could possibly imagine has been hashed out. So, it's not a matter of South Burlington filling divots that haven't been addressed already. I do think that, given the fact that the deadline for new parties to be added 13 and a half months ago does make it, and I think your city attorney made this pretty clear, makes it really problematic of whether you would be allowed in at this late date, certainly as a party plaintiff, and even as an amicus, because the whole premise of being an amicus is that you're participating early enough in the process to add your perspective to the argument. So, GBIC had me address a couple discreet issues. I didn't try to address all of them, they were prepared to pay me to address all of them. The City of Winuski focused on what count? They focused on noise. So, it was, it was, to come in now as an amicus, the benefit of an amicus is that you're going to the court and help them, okay, what is, you know, what does this entity think about? You know, for instance, if you have an appeal to the Vermont Supreme Court that has implications for a particular industry, you might have the trade group come in and explain what it is about this issue that is going to have implications beyond just that one case. And so, they bring that sort of trade, industry-wide perspective. I, you know, and now, I don't know which hat I'm putting on now, but, you know, as a Select Board member who was paying legal bills, one of the things I'd be mindful of is keeping your powder dry until you have an opportunity to participate fully. And to do so, having mustered all your forces, really reviewed it, and I do think that there is certainly going to be a full opportunity for the city to participate, not the party, but as an amicus. But the fact of the matter is, at the appellate level, you're arguing law anyway, so an amicus can argue all the legal points, you're gonna have the opportunity, and they are very much listened to. And so, standing back at this point, letting the process run its course, I'll bet everyone here a tall Coca-Cola that regardless of who wins, there's going to be an appeal. And then participate if the city chooses at that appellate level. And if you decide to choose whoever your zealous advocate is, it's gonna be his or her job to, you know, throw everything at it and do the best job possible. And you're just not able to do that at this point. But, I think you can sleep at night knowing that Mr. Dumont has raised every gold-iron issue, and that he will have preserved all those issues for appeal, and that there will be an opportunity to weigh on them as matters of law there. So, I don't want to get into debating the merits of it, because I, you folks have a lot of very good people to listen to here, and they've been extraordinarily patient.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Why did the GBIC hire you to enter, to participate as an amicus? What was the interest?
Well, well, because, I mean, GBIC obviously has an interest in the regional economy and maintaining a viable economy, and central to that and GBIC's efforts is Burlington International Airport. Burlington International Airport obviously works very closely with the air guard with respect to, among other things, emergency services. And there is a synergy there that is very important. GBIC wanted to be sure that, I mean, you had the Air Force was coming at it from a procedural perspective, "We did our job right, and this is why we did it right." You have, the opponents are coming in for the reasons why they didn't think, and GBIC thought it was important to step back a little bit and to provide some thoughts on issues, highlighting the importance regionally of the airport and the guard as a unit, and then the guard as a standalone economic engine.
Even though it's not germane to the case as far as I've been reading, it's germane to getting information, so what was the interest that...
We explained that interest to the court, the parties didn't object, and we filed briefs with respect to some noise issues, and we also filed having to do with the standard of review on appeal, and a couple other issues. Again, looking at it not from a narrower perspective of one of the parties, but as a neutral observer. At the end of the day, we didn't raise any new issues, because we couldn't, we're an amicus, but we wanted to be heard on a couple issues, and we're not leading this train by any step of the imagination, but GBIC felt it was important enough to participate in the process and do as much or as little as they ultimately decided based upon filings, because again, what role they wanted me to play was a function of how much money they wanted to spend, but also how the issues were playing out in court and what issues they thought they had something to add on. And you don't know that at the time, you join in as an amicus, you join in on the off-chance you really gotta do a lot. We ended up being fairly focused, much like the City of Winuski did, except we're not gonna have any appeal rights.
And may I ask you another question?
Sure.
I know you used to wear the hat of a Select Board member in Wilson, and I can imagine that questions of safety and financial wellness were very much important to you. And was there ever a time where you discarded that notion in favor of...
No, we've actually...
Was your top priority?
I mean, it, as it worked out, I came on the Select Board just as we were developing, we were working on our all-hazards mitigation plan, and I do know that Fire Chief Morton and the other folks were working very hard on that. And we are, in fact, I'm not involved right now, but I think they're going through an overhaul and revisiting that. As part of that process, we participated in the demonstration project. Absolutely. It's extraordinary, it's important now regardless. I mean, just as I can sit on a Sunday, late Sunday afternoon in the summer and watch all the planes coming in, it doesn't take much to imagine, I mean, that they come out and they come right down Wilston Road, and it's called Wilston Road to the Reason, because it's right in Wilston, and I'm sitting up looking at the, sort of, the valley there where the interstate and Route 2 goes, and they're coming right through there. Absolutely, it's important. You plan for the worst and hope for the best, and we depended upon our professionals working with regional, state, and federal folks to deal with that. For instance, I know recently the new transmission pipeline coming through with Vermont Gas, our Fire Chief was very proactive about reaching out to Vermont Gas to make sure that any additional training that the Wilson Fire Department would need to add for their social needs provided. And so, they're always, as I'm sure, I mean, South Burlington has an incredible fire department, I know that, we're always trying to keep up with those salaries with that. But, these folks are professionals, and given the layers that we have between local, regional, state, and federal, there's so many requirements that, you know, you have, you're gonna be going through a demonstration, you've got your, I don't know how much each of you are aware of it, you've got, you know, your emergency room, where you can go off, you can have, you know, communications with the town, you've got any number of things going on. So, there comes a point where you have to defer to the professionals and hope you did a good job of hiring your chiefs and your other folks, but also work on the all-hazards mitigation plan is crucial.
And that's part of the picture, and I'm sure you also understand the role of local government as opposed to state government and federal government, and when there is a federal decision, that could potentially cost the local taxpayers quite a pretty penny, that it's incumbent upon the local officials to really make sure that all of the stones are turned over.
Oh, and South Burlington's in a unique spot. I mean, you've got a little chunk of Burlington right smack dab in the middle of you. I mean, there's no doubt about it, you guys are in a unique spot. But I do think there's a, there's, there's two, there's two things here. One is the backward-looking litigation, looking at the process that was employed back in 2011, 2012, 2013, and the other is working with FAA, Air Force, and other federal agencies proactively, as you should as the leaders of your community, to make sure all available steps are available, be it mitigation, be it emergency preparedness, and all of that. And I, but I think that that can and should continue regardless of what goes on with respect to the backward-looking lawsuit. Now...
But, you know, as a lawyer, because this is your profession, you know that sometimes the law plays a role in order to be able to provide the safest conditions, right?
But I'm also, being from Wilson, I know that while we're told NEPA is just a procedural statute, and we're told that we just really want everybody to have... statute, and we're told that we just really want everybody to have the right information and get it right, the fact of the matter is, and this was brought out in sharp relief with respect to the CERC Highway, delays occasioned by doing additional EIS studies allow people time to do things in the non-legal sphere, political and otherwise, to gain an outcome that they may not have been able to gain earlier, it buys them time to get that outcome. So what happened with the CERC is it was about to be constructed, and a suit was filed about the EIS, and the determination was made by the court that the EIS was stale, and that a new one needed to be done. The new EIS, then, it was a multi-year process, they went through that, they were working through all the pieces, all the agencies that needed to be heard on the environmental issues were being heard, and the EIS was on the verge of being issued. And on the eve of that happening, Governor Shumlin decided to discontinue the CERC. And so what happened by way of the delay occasioned by the EIS challenge was the opportunity for more political steps to take place to nix the project, not on the merits, but because of the delay. And I think we would all be naive to ignore the fact that delay is beneficial to the opponents of the basing of the F-35. Not that that's good or bad, I'm not going to pass judgment, I've advised clients to use process to gain and achieve an end that isn't necessarily directly rated to the process. But we can't be so naive as to suggest that the only issue here is making sure, gosh darn, the Air Force gets it right. Because I think that there, and that might be the case with some...
Or to prepare.
Mm-hmm. But the preparation...
Right, it takes time to prepare, it takes years to prepare these things.
And the preparation can assuredly continue. I mean, we've had, we've heard about the ongoing dialogue between the fire department and the air guard, the ongoing training the air guard undertakes. That, and even if the F-35 never comes, that dialogue needs to continue in order to ensure safety for your citizens. And if the F-35 comes, it needs to continue, and it needs to also address that. But I do think that that is a separate process. I mean, at the end of the day, the US Air Force isn't going to make large decisions based upon whether or not South Burlington joins in this suit three weeks before oral argument. They're going to do what they're going to do. But folks, I suspect, hope that if there is sufficient delay, then they can work on the political avenues in an effort to have the base out here. And from my client's perspective, not allowing the air guard to continue with a robust, modern mission with the F-35 would be a shame and would have negative implications across the region. I'm now speaking as advocate for my client.
And for the political process, as we heard Counselor Chitnenga contact from Representative Peter Welch, I would assume that's because we're considering entering legal action. And I think sometimes legal action can be leverage in order to put pressure on the federal government and say, we need mitigation, we need to do something about this school...
We didn't tell him we had pretty much, just called because I called him.
Okay, well, very good.
The federal government does not respond to litigation pressure like Mr. Jones that you're having the boundary dispute with. I have regrettably been in a position of having to sue the federal government, and I find that they aren't as responsive to a lot of the stimuli and inputs that a private citizen may want to exert that would with a private party or a smaller entity. The fact of the matter is, a local municipality in Vermont, or certainly a private citizen, if they're confronted with a lawsuit, is going to immediately start evaluating, how much is this going to cost me, can I afford it? And even if I win, am I going to survive, or do I just get the heck out? The federal government's got an army, no pun intended, of lawyers who are already paid, there's no marginal increase in cost for them, they've got lawyers coming out of their ears, and they'll throw them at them, they litigate NEPA cases all over the country for major federal projects all the time. There's no, it doesn't change anything about what they're doing, because they have to litigate this. So I, personally, and different folks will have a different approach, but I think working collaboratively with the federal government and advocating for all of the things you've been talking about can be done without creating an adversary situation, hopefully designed to generate settlement leverage, because I don't think that the federal government responds as finely to litigation as a leverage.
But litigation, the process does, has revealed additional answers to that.
I still have other avenues.
In the course of, there isn't, I mean, I forget, my logic class was too long ago, I don't remember what the exact term is, just because it became available in the course of the litigation, it doesn't necessarily follow that it wouldn't have become available outside the litigation. And I forget what the logic term is for that. So, who knows? I can't speak for the Air Force.
But you've also made a good case, and they really don't do what they don't want to do. So, I mean, that's the flip side, right? Also, we're all kind of...
Well, I apologize for taking as long as I did, thank you for your time, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and now I'll let the real folks talk.
So, 11:00 PM. I have received hundreds and hundreds of emails, countless phone calls, messages, trying to stay up on this, the people want to be heard. The last time this discussion was had, a special session in a larger venue was held.
They have waited all of these hours, we cannot say no.
I've moved that we hold a public hearing on this matter, so that the public can be heard exclusively on this, so that the people can be represented in this action, so we can collect more information, still keeping other avenues open, filing out, even appeal as an amicus, joining at that time. But I just, I make the motion that we consider hearing from the public, have a ballot measure, just have a public forum dedicated so that all these people can be heard. For a second.
It's Ann Moore.
Discussion's second.
When would this take place?
Next Thursday, next week, a week's warning.
But you're out of town.
I will fly back for this.
Yeah, I'll be invited Thursday.
Family vacation be darned.
I'll be in Wednesday morning.
I'm just, I'm taking into account, and I, it is a late hour, and I know that everybody here has been waiting patiently, and if everybody speaks, it's going to be another hour. And I, I just want to say that out loud, because I don't know how many people want to be here for another hour. And I'm not trying to little the fact that there's a lot of opinion to be said, but it is late. And I also know that minds tend to function less efficiently, and they've been awake since 5:00 AM or 6:00 AM, so...
That's right.
So I'm just asking, in the best interests of this process tonight, what are our options before we talk about voting on this motion? There is a possibility that we designate another evening to have just this testimony and continue this discussion.
So, on Thursday?
Next Thursday? It's Wednesday, next Thursday?
Thursday.
Which one?
Twenty-third.
So, that's the twenty-third, Thursday, the twenty-third?
When are you leaving town?
I'm driving out Wednesday morning, taking the auto, tell everybody, taking the auto train out of DC.
We don't, we don't, we don't, so you're leaving Wednesday morning?
I should fly back Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
Up next week? Well, Monday, we have a council meeting, so I don't think we want to put this on top of the council meeting.
No, I don't fly back till Wednesday morning.
Well, how happy is that agenda? Let me just ask that question. Just curious.
We have...
We have remaining interviews.
That's why we're doing our training for open meeting law. Who would ask you if you have an opportunity?
I've had it once before.
Would you kindly consider Wednesday or Thursday, so that you will have all five counselors here?
Oh, absolutely, I would plan it without everyone here. I mean, I don't... Pardon me?
I fly back Wednesday.
So...
You're coming back Wednesday anyway.
So Wednesday night would work?
Wednesday night works. I mean, back to go to the guard program Wednesday afternoon.
No, Tom, I'm just asking this politely, but would you be willing to just electronically correspond with us that night, so you wouldn't have to fly back? Okay. I don't want you to have to fly back. So now we're talking, Wednesday night?
Wednesday night? Well, I don't have...
What's the date?
The 22nd.
Twenty-second. See, inefficient. The 22nd, okay, that's Wednesday, the 22nd. So... Oh, isn't that the day they were supposed to have our meeting with the VTAN?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's earlier than the day.
Yeah, that's why I was lying back. The timing is perfect.
It's perfect.
I'm flying on a Legion with six seconds.
So, 6:00 PM? Or do you want us to do 6:30?
That's up to group six, all that works for me. But 6:30, I mean, if that's the only order of business, I mean, we had...
I would prefer 6:30.
Okay. I mean, we only had 36 people sign up tonight, so I think we will not be having other witnesses, you know, in terms of how we have lawyers and...
When we left here from our last meeting, it was, the directive, as I heard, and I'd have to listen to the replay of it, because we've got somebody taking that, oh, yeah, this, over here, yes, sorry, but I mean, our usual channel settings. It was with the ideas so that the public could weigh in on the options we were bringing forward. Okay? So will we be going through each of the options first, and then allowing the public to weigh in?
I would think that would be a reasonable way to go about that.
Super, so they will all have copies of all of those then, that they can look at?
Yes.
They're all posted, anyway?
Well, the only, okay, and well, they're all posted, so they really, except for the very last one that Tim talked about.
Well, we need to have that.
But that will be posted, so of course.
So that everyone has the opportunity to look at all of the options that were prescribed.
Do you guys know that you have the attorneys' time to do this happen? We've been sitting here, I can't even talk, I've been sitting here so long. Do you know that the attorneys have the time they need? If, based on our decision, you're talking, but do the attorneys have the time they need after next week? If the public is tending on where the decision is.
Well, that potentially may be a risk, I would agree with that.
Well, you should probably just ignore that.
That's a conversation that we could, perhaps you could have with, or the two we could have with Jim.
Once this remains, it turns into reconvening until next Thursday, and if it's not fair, the first time...
Would the reconvening of this meeting allow parties from both opposing and in favor, bring more people to the plan of sheets?
Oh, possibly, yes. Budget will...
Oh, indubitably, if you're going to allow that, then indubitably, there will be many more people showing up.
Well, I would limit it to South Burlington.
We've already had full page ads out there.
Yes, I know. But we, but again, we would be limited within the timeframe.
Sorry, I have a procedural question, Madam Chair. You've got a motion, a second, I think you have a conversation among you guys, I don't think public comments like that. Under general rules of order.
Thank you very much.
So, is next Thursday, Wednesday, excuse me, the 22nd?
6:30 PM.
Well, the motion I have is that all the public hearings, the public has heard on this topic, and I presume you manage the date of Wednesday, the 22nd.
Six thirty.
We haven't voted yet, don't worry.
So, is our next further discussion, motion and passing second, right?
I did.
So, all in favor, so you can call motion aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have item eight, any other business?
That's one of those. Yes.
Ken, if you're going to leave, will you please be quiet? We do have one more item.
It's a very small item.
Okay.
I'd like to wish my son happy birthday, this is today's 21st birthday.
Oh!
Look at the camera, we trust in you, happy birthday, Sam.
So, motion, pardon me? On favor?
Aye.